Right, if I can start, if everybody is, sorry, if everybody is in their seats. So, welcome everybody to our November meeting. I'm also going to have to say some of the housekeeping rules which we will have from our interim director of legal and governance. Can I also include that we do not allow banners to be hung in the, in the chamber? Part of it is now because we also have cameras here which you might actually cover, but also because banners may be used outside the chamber but not inside them. So I realise that that's a disappointment to our people in the gallery, but I would ask you please to observe this rule. Thank you. And can I now ask the interim director of legal and governance to announce the housekeeping arrangements?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Please can I request members of the public to familiarise themselves with the fire safety and evacuation notices displayed in the public gallery. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from the security attendants who will be in attendance throughout the meeting. Can I also request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so they do not disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Photography, video and sound recording of the meeting is permitted, but the Lord Mayor does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which would capture personal information, or if a member of the public participating objects to being recorded. Any member of the public due to speak at the meeting who does not wish to be recorded should say so at the start of their speech and the Lord Mayor will suspend the permission to record their contribu-, to record their contribution. For safety reasons, please may I ask that recording equipment is not held over the balcony. Finally, although there are no longer any specific Covid safety measures to adhere to, individuals are welcome to wear face covering within the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I shall conclude these housekeeping announcements by stating that the meeting is scheduled to finish at 5:30pm, but I will adjourn the meeting at an appropriate point in the proceedings to give members the opportunity to take a comfort break. Apologies for absence. I've got councillor Mazza Ikbal, councillor Bob McCam, Peter Price, Anne Wallhouse, Paul Wood, Sophia Said. Are there any other apologies? I see that Peter's not here. Is there an apology? Thank you. And I understand that councillor Wetherall will be leaving at some stage in the meeting, so it's recognised. Thank you. Right, this item of business is to enable members of the council to declare an interest in any item on the agenda. Does any member wish to declare an interest?
Yes, I wish to declare an interest in the first motion that we're passing. I am a director of Sheffield Renewables, which is a renewable energy company, but it's a non-financial interest.
I'm also a member of Sheffield Renewables.
Sorry, but not a director?
No, I'm not a director, I'm a member of Sheffield Renewables.
Oh, that's a turpin.
Thanks, I'm the director of a business involved with retrofitting buildings, but nothing specific to this. Thanks.
Thank you. Right, so we go on to item four, which is public questions and petitions and other communications. And the first, the first bit here is Lord Mayor's communication, so I just want to thank everybody here for the best wishes that I received from all of you following my car crash, and to let you know that the inside of 18 Lion Street looks like a florist, and I'd like to thank everybody very much for that. And here I am and I'm all right. In the meantime, I have been out doing a spot of maring. We had a really good merril, what's the word I'm looking for? Mind goes blank. Event, let's use it as a word, as an event, in, in the Winter Gardens last night, when we had the four teams for wheelchair rugby league who are based in Sheffield. So that was just great to meet them all. We've got the US team, we've got the Scottish team, we've got the French team, who are the favourites, and the best team, which is the Welsh team. So I got presented with a Welsh Rugby League jersey, which is beyond my wildest dreams. I never got to play for Wales, but in my dreams now I can put that t-shirt on. There've been lots of other great events. We've been out to open a new school education building in Wurlow, which is going to be for young people who aren't very good in formal educational settings, and it's hoped that by using these education buildings there, that it will build their confidence and help them to move back towards traditional education. And in the meantime, Colin deputised for me very ably while I was away, including meeting the Finnish ambassador. So I would need to thank Colin very much, and I think he's got a couple of words to add as well.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Last night I attended the Pittsmoor Adventure Playground, where they were presented with a very prestigious, and I'm going to use the word appropriately, Queen's Award for Voluntary Service. It was one of the last awards that was actually signed, and it is a genuine signature from, from the Queen for all they've done i- in that, that area. It was presented by the Lord Lieutenant, as I say, very prestigious award, and I just wanted to highlight that this is a very good news story for the Pittsmoor Burngrieve area, where it gets a lot of pub publicity, but there's a lot of good community spirit going on. And further, it was a great pleasure to see former councillor Jackie Drayton there at that, at that event, that she, she was there. And I know that you'd all want to pass on, as I did, you know, our good wishes for, for how she's going on there. Okay, thank you, Lord Mayor.
And thank you, Colin. Right, public questions can be asked and petitions can be presented at council meetings. We encourage questions or petitions to be submitted two clear days in advance of the meeting to help public attendance to be managed in a safe way at the meeting and to assist members to provide responses or answers. Petitions or questions received after the submission deadline shall be presented or asked at the meeting at my discretion as chair of the meeting. For this meeting, one petition will be presented and questions will be taken from six, we haven't got the additional.
Six, there's a next.
From six and possibly seven members of the public, and a further petition has been received in the absence of a presenter. And finally, there is one more petition referring to the Graves Park Rose Garden Cafe building, and this will be debated at the end of this item of business. So we'll be doing the questions and the other petitions first. And this is because you're, you have triggered, with the, with the huge number of people who've supported your petition, you have triggered what is called a petition debate. And the whole of the questions and the other petitions have a period of up to 60 minutes, and then the debate on your petition has a further 25 minutes of debate. So can I call upon the chief exec to announce petitions? And can I ask that petitioners be brief and keep within the time limit of three minutes? And can I please request any members, councillors, to keep their maximum time limit of five minutes when responding? It's, it's an aim, you don't have to take up the full five minutes. So, Chief Exec.
Thank you, Chair. I've received an electronic petition containing 275 signatures requesting the council to cancel the city centre Clean Air Zone. Ibra Hussain wishes to address the council. It's recommended that the petition is referred to the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee.
Lord Mayor.
I do apologise, Mr Hussain, do carry on.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you very much, as I have only three minutes to present my petition. I'm presenting this petition on behalf of my colleagues and myself because the petition is very clear on the Clean Air Zone. I know we've gone a long way down the road, but however, the position we are in now and the whole country's in, as you're well aware, in the crisis, the cost of living and everything else that's affecting us, this policy will affect especially the cab trade very badly because we only have one manufacturer of hackney carriage, the black cabs, in the UK, and that vehicle costs £65,000. I don't think in this climate anyone can afford a £65,000 vehicle. Two points on this. One, we have a hackney carriage policy which should have been decided, is gonna, is now delayed till March 2023. That specification policy needs to come forward, that will help greatly with the specification and assist us and ha- and have a compliant vehicles. We're asking for mixed fleets, stroke, saloon cars and that, but if that doesn't happen, then this policy will be very detrimental for us. At this current point, we are struggling like anyone else, so we're asking for, I know you're not going to cancel this because of the government restraints on you, but you can delay and postpone this policy to give us time to breathe and move together. I don't want an hammer approach, we need to have a hands-on approach, together, working and appealing to all the political parties here. We have to work together on this to make sure that we deliver for our city, the city we love, as a clean, green city for all of us. I want social justice on this because this, this is very important to every one of my colleagues as well. So that's a plea on that, let's work together to resolve this issue. And also, on the Surrey Street, Lord Mayor, we've got a bus gate where it's, where it had authorised vehicles which we qualified, that has been removed, and as black cabs and private hire vehicles, we cannot drop people off through the Surrey Street route, whether they're disabled or blind. So this is very unfair when we need to be part of the integrated transport and we have to resolve this issue. We have sent numerous emails and challenged the officers on the authorised vehicle order, this immediately removed the signage and they're placed, we can't use this. To me, this is bizarre. Are we going to close our city centre off for a public transport where we have wheelchair vehicles and other bookings to take to, through the Surrey Street? So I'm pleading to you to please look at Clean Air Zone and the Surrey Street, and let's work together to resolve this issue because that's the only way forward now. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Hussain. And can I call upon councillor Julie Grokut, the co-chair of the Transport, Regen and Climate Policy Committee, to respond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Mr Hussain, for your petition this afternoon. It's good to see you here again today. And as you know, over the last 18 months, both myself and councillor Fox, as leader of the council, have had numerous conversations with yourself, with the taxi trade. This is something that is very important to us, that we do, that we do get right. But to answer the, the question that was specifically put into the petition, I would like to say that we completely understand your concerns, and I think you already know that from our previous conversations, and that this is why we are constantly pushing government for extra financial support for those affected by the implementation of the Clean Air, Clean Air Zone. As a result, we have one of the best packages available to any local authority. But we recognise that this doesn't go far enough, and as governments are mandating that we must do this, we believe that they need to do much more to support people and businesses to make the upgrades that are needed. However, we do recognise that as a council, we need to do what we need to do to improve air quality for all residents in our city, and making sure that this is done as fairly as possible. We are committed to delivering the Clean Air across the city, and we are standing by our commitment to deliver the Clean Air Zone. Whilst this is a legal obligation from government to implement the Clean Air Zone, we as a council do strongly support the reasons behind the scheme, making a positive impact on the health of Sheffield's future in years to come. We wish to protect the public from exposure to NO2 emissions from road traffic, which can permanently damage children's lungs, can cause strokes, lung cancer, cardiovascular disease and many more illnesses. But we have always said that the implementation of this must be done as fairly as possible, and that is why we've pushed government to do so much more, and we will continue to do so throughout this period. We want to work with every organisation and resident in Sheffield to make sure that this is fair and equitable for everyone. We cannot ignore the damaging effects of air pollution and must implement the important scheme of the Clean Air Zone as well as others, but we need to make sure we are bringing everyone with us on this journey. The scheme will go live in the spring, and further details will be rolled out really soon, including how people can apply for the grants and the loans. We will work hard to mobilise the financial support measures and do everything we can to help people to make the upgrades as soon as they possibly can. The financial packages will be up and running very soon, and we will update everyone in due course, and of course, we will continue working very closely with the taxi trade and all van drivers to do everything that we can to support you. Thank you for coming this afternoon.
Right, thank you councillor Grokut. The next petition I have is regarding the Rose Garden Cafe. This is a different petition to the large petition. An electronic petition has been received containing 20 signatures. There is no, requesting the council to ensure the Rose Garden Cafe is funded, repaired and remains open. There's no speaker to the petition, and we are recommending that the petition be referred to the Charity Trustee Subcommittee. Is that agreed with everybody? I will take a silent break, thank you. So now we're going to move on to questions from members of the public. Can I ask question, as to be as brief as possible when asking your questions? And also, again, that members keep responses short and succinct, and that's to ensure that as much time as possible is available for other items of business on the agenda for today's meeting. So thank you in advance for your cooperation. So the first, I have three short questions from Abdi Hussain. So could you come to the microphone to ask your questions? Okay, Mr Hussain is not here, so...
We're just going to confirm we've not been able to locate Mr Hussain.
In, in which case, I will ask that he has sent written replies to his questions, and his questions and those answers will be printed in the minutes for everybody to see. All right. So the next question is Matt Turner. If Matt can come to the microphone to ask your question? I scared them off. Okay, in, in which case, I will ask again for Matt's questions to be answered by the relevant chair of the committee, and we will print both the questions and the answers in the minutes of this meeting so that everybody will know. My next question is Matt Kilea, who has one question. It's here. So can you come to the microphone and ask your question, please? I can see it's quite a long question, can you try and succinct it?
I'll try. All right, thank you. So as, as we're all aware, people across our city are struggling with the cost of living crisis. In my own area of South West Sheffield, I know of an old lady, she doesn't want to give her name, but she's a vulnerable pensioner on a prepayment meter, and she's seen her electricity bills more than double in the last year, and she's understandably worried. I've also been told that doorstep lenders are targeting people in these same estates. In dealing with this cost of living crisis, I want to commend the response led by councillor Fox in classifying this as a major incident and declaring a citywide emergency response and package of support. Financially, I know this is a difficult thing to do, given the state of the council's finances and as a result of, of the austerity that we've been under for the last 12 years, which as we all know was brought in by the Tory and Lib Dem coalition government in 2010. Given the incredibly difficult circumstances faced by our communities and given the financial pressures on our main council budgets, I want to ask how the local area committees, or LACs, such as my own in South West Sheffield, can help support people during the crisis. Local area committees are supposed to be a valuable form, a valuable forum of local voices, and they also have their own devolved budgets. I did write to councillor Sanger, our RL, LAC, our LAC chair, about this issue a month ago, and I would like to thank him for his response, which I received late last night. My concern, my concern remains that my own lack is not being proactive or timely enough in responding to this crisis. It is not enough to simply commit to reprioritise funding when the opportunity occurs. How and when will these decisions be taken? What is the mechanism? Could we, for example, have a special meeting for residents and local organisations to talk about this as a matter of urgency? Waiting for our next quarterly LAC meeting in January is simply too slow. Ploughing on with a budget as is just doesn't recognise the huge change in circumstances in our community since we set our community priorities. So in summary, do you agree that all political parties should use all available budgets to prioritise support for those that are struggling, whilst we see people, the people of Sheffield through a very challenging period? And if so, what proactive measures will be taken to adjust the South West and other LAC budgets and to engage the public on these decisions as a matter of urgency? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Kilea. Can I ask councillor Terry Fox, the leader of the council and chair of the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee, to respond?
First of all, thank you, Miss Kilea, for your, for your questions and for them in advance, so I was able to gather some facts across the piece. First of all, I did visit the South West LAC just, just the last month, where saw the councillors that were in, in the area, and I listened to the debate with councillor Minish and councillor Ruff, raised, raised the issue with the other councillors i- i- in the room. And I understand that they, on the South West, they've got a community plan, which they spoke to the community and are addressing those areas. I have seen the letter from councillor Andrew Sanger, and thanks for sharing it, Andrew, it was appreciated, where, where it has rolled out. I just wanted to express the sheer enormity, I think, of the problem that is, it's in the city, and the reason why we classed it as a major incident, which is ongoing. And as you quite rightly said, money lenders are probably in every area in this city at the moment, operating the way that they do. We have set up a gold, silver and bronze command within the city to carry on the work that we did during our time. We have set up the neighbourhood places, with over 27 libraries and seven family centres and welcoming places. A number of cost party committees, our councillors, sit on the cost of living committee and are working through. We are working with partners throughout the voluntary action Sheffield, and we are working with a number of different organisations. We are about to roll out the Crown Commercial Services, QCQS, which will help deliver prepaid credit card, debit cards and physical and virtual digital cards to help a number of issues around the eating, the eating pressures that are going on in this area. I'd just like to throw out just the money that we are contributing as a city, a city's crisis, never mind what this chaotic government is doing. We are still having, as a public service organisation, picking up the pieces on the situation. So with, we've set up the Community Support Helpline, we've set up the Household Support Fund, where we are actually delivering over 5.2 million out across the city. From October 21 to March 22, we distributed over 3.6 million out to families for free school meals, vouchers to cover school holidays. A total of 1.2 million was distributed by the application. April to September 22, the period that's just ended, we have distributed over 1.7 million pound out to pension-aged households in receipt of housing benefit or council tax support via the £100 payment. And October 22 to March 23, we also rolled out the grant of over, we're being granted 5.2 million to displace the schemes that are in place. On your question about the LACs, it's just the LACs to decide what they do and how they roll out, but I would ask that any arm of this organisation reaches out to those communities. The reason that they were set up in the first place was to pick up that local intelligence, to work with communities, to help support communities, and if other communities needed that, it is now. And I understand, I visited sort of about four out of the seven LACs, I will be going round, the rest of the LACs to see how they are delivering for their communities. But what we do, and what we really welcome as all councillors, is for members of the public like yourselves to come and challenge us, make sure that you hold us to account where we are spending public money, but where we are also delivering for residents of Sheffield. And at this time, more important it is now to deliver for the residents of Sheffield. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Please, can Isabel O'Leary come to the microphone to ask your questions?
Okay. I understand that the council must balance the needs of residents across the city, and this is especially difficult when funding is so tight. However, you may be aware that many people's trust in Sheffield City Council was severely damaged. damaged during the street tree dispute. And so far, there has been no demonstration by senior officers or elected members of lessons learned, and no recognition shown.
Can I just interrupt you on that point, because I believe there is an independent inquiry going on into the trees issue?
Yes, and there's been no recognition shown.
So therefore, can I ask you to carry on with your question, please? Because when we have the results of that inquiry, that's when you'll be able to come in and comment and ask questions on it. Thank you.
So, from the independent inquiry so far, there's been no recognition shown that maybe there were fundamental flaws in decision-making, because they did not listen to people giving well-researched and reasoned advice. I'm concerned that similar flaws in decision-making may be happening in the council now with respect to Graves Park. Sheffield City Council, as you know, is the sole trustee of the Graves Park charity. There are currently three issues of concern in Graves Park, and I have three questions to address these. Number one, the most high-profile issue currently is the closure and fate of the Rose Garden Cafe, and I'm worried that the council may try to reject the views of campaigners for the Rose Garden Cafe as those of a small vocal minority, or suggest that the 11,000 people who signed the petition either didn't know what they were signing, or did not really want the restoration of the current Rose Garden Cafe. Can we trust that the council understands the public's desire to stabilise, restore, and then maintain the current iconic Rose Garden Cafe building, rather than any options involving demolishing the cafe? The proposed issue two about Graves Park is that the proposed sale of the freehold for Bowl Hill Farm, which is part of the designated charitable parkland, goes against the will and wish of J.G. Graves. The council appear to believe that not only are they allowed to, but are obliged to sell the freehold to the current leaseholder, despite the Charity Commission stating that the farm should not have been sold, as it is designated land, and the trustee has no power of sale. So my question is, has the council, as sole trustee of this charitable parkland, consulted the Charity Commission on this proposed sale? Does the council understand that the Leasehold Reform Act excludes charitable land? And can we trust that the council is not seeking to mislead the public in suggesting that the current leaseholders have the automatic right to buy the freehold? And question three, can we trust that the council will fulfil their commitment to restoring the nurseries area of Graves Park to parkland? This would be at no cost to the council, as the Friends of Graves Park have a design and will provide labour and materials. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. I'm going to invite councillor Brian Lodge, who is chair of the Charity Trust Subcommittee, to respond to questions one and two, and then councillor Richard Williams, chair of the Communities, Parks and Leisure Policy Committee, to respond to question three. Brian, I'm going to suggest that on question one, you don't give us a very long answer, because we're going to have a very full debate on that when those questions will be answered. So mainly question two, please, which is clearly an important issue too, and then Richard.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for the questions and for coming along this afternoon. I will briefly just touch on the first question whilst we are going to have a debate later on on here. I just want to reassure you, you know, there is no decision being taken regarding that, but one of the things that, and we'll come out, and my colleague councillor Ridgler will make a contribution later on, that we are looking to work with the campaign group and the Friends group at looking at submitting a listing. That's my colleagues within the Labour Group have been discussing it, and councillor Ridgler will discuss that later on, submitting a listing for the building, because we recognise the importance of it. I've used that building many times, I've used the cafe there with my children, with my granddaughter now, so I appreciate that. I live a little bit further away, but I appreciate the strength of feeling that's felt there. With regarding the sale of the freehold at Bowl Hill Farm, it's a difficult one, because the council are the corporate trustees of the Graves Park. The Charitable Trust Subcommittee are representatives to deliver the council corporate responsibility. When we had the meeting last week or so, on the 25th of October, this item was raised, it was a question that was raised, and the advice that we received in that committee meeting was that this was part of the reversal of the freehold, and it was in there. Since then, we've had further communication from Caroline, from the Friends of Graves Park who's written to us, and the information that's there. And we've also had a further letter from the Charities Commission asking questions around there. So as a council, the council will be responding to those. We are seeking advice and we are seeking guidance. So until we have that information and the response from the questions that are going to be put to the Charities Commission, then we need to understand a little bit more on there. So thank you for bringing that to the attention of the public again today in here. It is something we are aware of, and it is something that officers are now looking at, the whole issue around there, and with the information that's been provided, and from the Charity Commission as well. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Can I also ask, therefore, that when you do have that information, when it all comes in, that we make sure that Ms O'Leary has also given a copy of that information as a final answer to her question?
It will come back to the Charity Commission, but obviously we don't know how long it's, the Charitable Trust Subcommittee, sorry, obviously we don't know how long it is to get all this information here, but obviously we'll be working at the earliest opportunity to get this in, and we will be scheduling another meeting, but we'll make sure that the information comes back to you.
Right, and now, sorry, councillor Williams.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for your question. Our position on the Norton Nursery area has not changed at the moment. What I would say is that we are undertaking a review of all our depots, and we are looking for alternative operating bases for our parks and countryside teams and the wider council stuff. Until then, we will have to continue to use it to serve primarily Graves Park, but also some of the surrounding areas. What I will say is that I will ask for an update to come to committee at the earliest opportunity to find out the status of that review. Thank you.
And again, when you have that review, can we make sure that Ms O'Leary also gets a copy of that? Okay? Right. Please, can Russell Johnson come to the microphone to ask your questions?
Hello. Lord Mayor, members, many thanks, and officers, many thanks for this opportunity to be here to ask three not-too-long questions. Number one, I understand SCC commissioned Bevan Britain, which is a legal company, to investigate and report upon the improper use of exemption, of the exemption of legal and professional privilege. This was used by officers and elected members to deliberately suppress legitimate requests for information, particularly with reference to the street tree dispute, now subject to the independent inquiry by Sir Mark Lowcock. Question eight, on what date was the report commissioned? B, has this report been submitted to SCC, and if so, on what date? C, when can the citizens of Sheffield finally expect publication of this report? And D, finally, what has been the full cost of the exercise to investigate this misuse? Question two, at full council on 7th of July, I asked that the council commit to the removal of clause 6.38 from the Amy Streets Ahead PFI contract. This, for those who aren't aware, is the contractual requirement, and that is what it is, it's not a modelling number, as we heard from John Mathersole last week, to remove seventeen and a half thousand street trees during the term of the contract. On that occasion, when I asked that question, I was pleased and surprised, I have to say, that councillor Wood answered, yes, that clause would be removed. I have to say that at the time, there appeared, although councillor Wood found it unproblematic, it seemed, there were people behind him and officers who looked a bit concerned. However, this removal of 6.38, which was committed to on the 7th of July, has not happened as far as I'm aware. Questions, A, why not? B, in the context of Amy LG and Amy PLC now being under new owners, Farovial has sold their interest in total, the new owners may no longer wish to mitigate reputational damage as Farovial needed to do during the dying days of the contract, from their point of view. Does SCC foresee additional difficulty in fulfilling their stated commitment to remove this clause, and/or in reduced flexibility because of the new ownership more widely? And this is about, of course, democratic control, which is a problem with PFIs. C, given the history of incompetence and naivety of Sheffield City Council Legal and Governance Section evidenced in recent inquiry testimonies, can taxpayers be confident that the city's interests will not be further disadvantaged in any negotiations with the new owner that may be required? Question three, despite previous assurances, there are still delays and excessive reductions in the council's responses to freedom of information requests. Question, does the leader agree with me that it's in no one's interests to return to the situation described by councillor Lodge and former chief exec John Mathersole in their inquiry evidence last week, when the council was bombarded with and, by their own admission, overwhelmed by FOIRs and SARs? And finally, would the leader give a commitment to offer such transparency and honest communications in future, such that the citizens need to resort to these routes less frequently? Thank you.
Thank you for your nine questions. I'm going to invite councillor Terry Fox to respond to the first batch and the third batch of questions, and councillor Joe Otten to respond to the second batch. Is it best if we do it one, two, three, or are you going to do all of them? Go on then.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll take both sets of questions, and let councillor Otten. First of all, hi, Mr Johnson, I see you again. And thanks for the questions. And I've been citing them, unfortunately, as you probably can tell, I'm just back off leave, so I've not been able to have much time, so if there is any detail in here, I'll get back to you. So first of all, the Bevan Britain report was commissioned to allow the council to respond to the specific complaints that were made. Although it was commissioned with the intention of being made public, we have realised that making its finding public is the right thing to do, and we will do so in the very near future. We will also make it available to the street tree inquiry and the Information Commissioner's Office. However, tis the right of the first person to see the report is the complainant. Regrettably, for a number of reasons, which I'll have to challenge, I'll get back to you, certainly for a number of reasons, that's taken longer to conclude than it should, but will be resolved imminently. We will then make the report public. Dealing with your specific questions to the report, sorry, to the specific questions, the report was commissioned in April last year, and the report was received in final form on the 10th of August this year. The cost has been £35,900, including VAT. You are right that we can always, as an organisation, look at what information we proactively make public, produce huge amounts of information, some of which are rightly cannot be published, but should consider which of that will be in the interest and should be published. Whilst the FOI and SARs are important, right, citizens should not have to use them to gain access. And as we are well aware with the experience with that, that we will make that a priority to try and do that, but I understand why, people may want to do that. And just to put on record, I will be attending the street tree inquiry in the next few weeks, I haven't got the date with me. Thank you, Lord, I think that covers them all, thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Right, and councillor Joe Otten, please.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you, Mr Johnson, for the questions. It feels slightly odd to be answering questions on the subject from this side of the room. Over many years, I've been asking similar questions from this side to the other side. On the question of the clause 6.38, I'm advised that clause has been removed, that the contract change notice has been issued. That is not the completion of the legal process for removal of the clause, but that it has, that it is, you know, the process is underway, and the change notice has been issued. Further, that we are certainly not applying a target for tree removal in the operation of the contract today. You'll be aware of such things as the operation of the street tree partnership, which is where, you know, decisions, consultation happens on some of the outstanding tree issues. I'm a little bit frustrated that some of that process is so slow with regard to the outstanding, some of the outstanding streets, but we are moving forward in those, and there are streets that are going ahead where we are saving all the trees that, you know, wasn't originally part of the plan. So let me assure you that that removal of that clause is underway, and that it's not today being used as a target. Whether it was ever a target, I mean, it's going to come out of the inquiry, isn't it? I think they say, well, I look forward to that, I look forward to that answer, I'm sure as much as you do. On the question of the sale of Amy to the new parent company, I mean, this doesn't materially affect our rights under the contract, so of course it may result in changes in terms of culture, but these things can go either way. We are not, we're not concerned there's a material change there that necessarily ought to make the situation any worse. There are performance issues associated with the only contract at the moment. They are coming to the Waste of the Street Seeing Committee in December to kind of explain their plans, to come back up to, get back up to standard, but that is not a question really related to the sales with the new parent company. And I think that answers probably your question C as well. I'm tempted to, yeah, no, that does answer your question C as well, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. We next have questions from Rizwana Lala, so could you come to the microphone, please, to ask your questions?
Hi, thank you. My name's Rizwana Lala, and I'm submitting these questions on behalf of Medac Sheffield. Medac Sheffield were a collective of health professionals in Sheffield that campaigned for health justice. I think we're all aware of the horrifying scenes that have come out of Manstone, but I am here today to talk about the local picture in terms of the conditions that asylum seekers in Sheffield are living in. We, as members of Medac Sheffield, as frontline NHS workers, are raising serious concerns about the welfare of those seeking asylum in Sheffield, in particular those who are currently residing in home office accommodation. The use of unsuitable accommodation of those asylum seekers housed in Sheffield is well documented, and we know that this can lead to tragic consequences. We have an example, a really awful example, of five-year-old Mohammed Muneeb Majidi's death last year. Recently, we have come across many, many instances of unsuitable accommodation. We've been working with migrant organisations who are telling us that GPs are unwilling to go into the accommodation because it's so dirty and unsanitary that they are worried about the welfare of other patients through infectious disease, through infectious disease spread. I'm just going to raise two examples of some of the concerns that frontline doctors have seen in Sheffield hospitals. One was a 17-year-old girl who presented with severe malnutrition and severe trauma because she wasn't fed properly within the accommodation. And despite only being 17, there was no key worker or social worker assigned to her. I'm also going to give another example of an extremely vulnerable older woman with dementia who presented again with severe malnutrition. And one of the reasons why she presented... And one of the reasons why she presented at the hospital with severe malnutrition is because that she needed to be fed with a healthcare feed, because she was so vulnerable. But the home office accommodation did not have the facilities to store her medical feed. So to feed her, her son chewed the food and fed her. I know this is really, really graphic, but I think people need to understand the conditions that our people are living in, in Sheffield accommodation. It is really, really upsetting as frontline health workers when we are coming across these stories. And we want to understand, you know, Sheffield has a proud history of being a city of sanctuary, and we want to know what the council is doing to ensure the welfare of the asylum seekers that are coming to our city, to ensure that their welfare is and their human rights and dignity are maintained. We also then are worried about people not accessing healthcare.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to move on to your two questions, please, Rizwana.
Sure. So we are, when people, I am just going to say one more thing, when people are presenting to the hospitals when they are in severe need of care because they have no choice, but people are not, because of the hostile environment and the migrant charges, what we are seeing is people are reticent to access the healthcare that they need because they're being charged up to 150% for their healthcare in Sheffield hospitals. And if they do not pay that charge within eight weeks, then that information is shared with the home office and it can affect people's asylum status. So there's a massive barrier to accessing healthcare. So I have two questions for the council. Can the council assure us that they are using all their levers to end the hostile environment for migrants in Sheffield hospitals, especially in the light of the Race Equality Commission? And the council assuring us that they are pledging to be an anti-racist city? The next question is, can the council tell us what steps they are being taken to assure the welfare needs of asylum seekers are being met in the accommodation that the asylum seekers are housed in Sheffield?
Thank you, Ms Lala. I'm going to ask councillor Angela Argentio to answer your first question, and then councillor Douglas Johnson will answer your second question. Angela.
Thank you, Rizwana, for bringing these questions to us. I mean, we are aware of what's going on out there, but it's always important to be reminded about what really happens on our doorstep. So in terms of, of course, I totally agree with you, and I think we need to do all that we can to use the leverage that we have to put, you know, pressure on what is effectively a directive from national government. So our relationship with the local NHS bodies is very strong and is getting stronger with the new structure that we're all navigating with the move from the CCG to the SCB and, you know, and the relationship with the hospitals. But I and George are always prepared to ask difficult questions, and we are actually looking into organising some meetings to ask those questions. But also, can I say that public questions can be asked in all of our committees? So for example, if you want to come to our next Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee, and you or anybody in the public wants to put more pressure on us, it's on the 16th of November. The Health and Wellbeing Board is on the 8th of December, and that one is where, it's a partnership with the NHS, so there will be people that work at the, you know, in the NHS there, so it's a good forum to ask questions. And also the ICP, which is the Integrated Board Partnership Meeting, I believe it's on the 28th of November, but I can, I'm not sure if that is a public meeting, but I can let you know. But I will certainly ask questions of colleagues in the NHS and see what we can do as a council. Not very much, but we can put pressure and ask those difficult questions. So thank you very much for bringing that to us.
Thank you, Angela, for your thorough answer. And now councillor Douglas Johnson.
Thank you, thank you for your speech on describing what's happened, and I was just hearing on the news this morning, looking at the pictures of what's happening in Kent, and of course they reflect the awful conditions that you've described there. And of course, you also mentioned Sheffield being really proud, and this is actually the whole of Sheffield, and I don't just mean the council here, the city's proud to be, they've been the first city of sanctuary, and so we've a long tradition of wanting to welcome people in and support people, and we have a really strong voluntary sector that does that. And I understand that we now have about, about, and there's a reason for this, we don't know exactly, about 1,300 men, women and children who are currently living in the city, who are currently in the process of seeking asylum. So that's figure, I'm giving that. You have to remember, though, that when people come to this country having fled persecution and they're in need of housing, in need of social services, in need of help, they're not treated like other people. And that's a really important point. And as a result, the council is simply not permitted to provide the assistances to other people who are homeless, or indeed to other people who've got care and needs in terms of social care. It's not permitted to do that, and consider that the council's abilities are fairly constrained here. And of course, you'll be aware, the reason for that is because the whole issue of migration is something that's been so politically toxic that no government for the last few decades has dared to do anything with it. And that's why we have this really shameful situation that migrants who come here are shoveled down a different track from other people, and they end up in situations like you described. So where that leaves us is that we have got officers in the council here who are doing a lot of really good stuff to do what they can, but you have to remember that they're funnelled down the route through NAS, contract down to Mears, which is a big property company. They have contracts, and the aim of that is to completely bypass local democratic control and oversight. It's to stop people like us getting involved. So the council has no legal jurisdiction about their welfare. What it can do is that our people in our private rented standards section do have some ability to, with jurisdiction over houses in multiple occupation. So where people seeking asylum are housed in housing multiple occupation, then there is scope for inspection of those, and that can be a really useful lever to, you know, make sure that people have contact from officers and they can supervise something of their living standards there. And in terms of education, there's, you know, ability to get in and look at education placements. Great for asylum seekers with school-aged children, less so for those at preschool levels. And then adults and social, adult and children's social care have some role in that, and the people, the staff involved with that deal with that where they can. And not surprisingly, right across the board, we're under huge pressure to spread out the services there. And then finally, I've got to note that we have some of our environmental protection team that can occasionally get involved. But the backdrop of that is massively, massively reduced resources for all these teams in the council. And, yeah, we are firefighting against, you know, a huge corporate regime, which is home office outsourcing to the likes of Mears. So a bit of a dispiriting answer, I guess, but that's what we are.
Thank you, Douglas. And I hope, Rizwana, you will take up councillor Argentio's invitation to come to ask further questions at some of the other policy committees. Right, I've had one late question, which I'm not going to take because it arrived very late, and also because it pertains to some personal circumstances which I wouldn't want us to discuss at the meeting. I will ask the chairs of the committees concerned, which is councillor Argentio and councillor Lindas Hammond, to respond in writing to the person who asked them, so thank you. And that concludes item 4A on the agenda. And we now move on to item 4B, which is petition requiring debate, which I think is why most of the people in the gallery are here today. The council's petition scheme requires that a petition containing over 5,000 signatures from individuals who live, work or study in Sheffield be the subject of debate at the council meeting. Twenty-five minutes are allowed for each such debate. An electronic petition has been received containing over 9,250 signatures, and I believe it's up to 11 now. And of those, certainly more than 5,000 are deemed to be from individuals who either live, work or study in Sheffield. And this petition asks the council to repair, not demolish, the Rose Garden Cafe in Graves Park. Further details of the petition are set out in the council summons. There you go, if you all have copies of that. So I'm going to call on Liz Nat to present the petition on behalf of the petitioners, and you've got three minutes to do this. What you probably haven't noticed, we have a light here, can you see the green light in front of me? And that will then, when you have a minute left, it'll go amber and red when your three minutes are up, just to give you an idea of pacing.
I've timed it all, don't worry. I'm about thirty seconds over, but I doubt you'll cut me off for that.
Okay.
Lord Mayor, councillors and everyone in the public gallery, thank you very much. I'm here today to present to you the petition to save the Rose Garden Cafe building. For those of you who don't know, the building located in Graves Park was constructed in 1927 as a refreshment pavilion at the instruction of JG Graves. This petition, which is now at over 11,000 signatures, shows the support that there is for repairing that building which you have deemed as at the end of its life. On Friday, it will be 100 days since I saw a post from Brew Kitchen that they had been closed down with 15 minutes' notice to evacuate the building, and that there was mention of demolition by the council. I personally was really angry, sad and upset. That building is a beacon of light when I'm walking through the park, it makes me smile, it invites me in, and it stands tall on the hill saying, "I am Graves Park." I'm a working mom with very little time, and yet I felt so strongly that this iconic building should be saved, that I began the petition on the same day. And very quickly, with very little effort, we were gaining signatures at an incredible rate, showing just how much anger there was and how much support there is for repairing the building. As mentioned, to enable this debate today, we needed 5,000 signatures from very specific Sheffield postcodes. But at physical stalls that we've held in the park to publicise the petition, we've gained signatures from people from all over the country who were visiting for the day. And in fact, there are people in Rotherham, Drumfield, Barnsley and beyond Sheffield that are regular users of the park and whose very valid signatures should be counted. JG Graves gifted Graves Park to the people of Sheffield in 1925, we all know that, but in 1927, he was also gifted a gold key to the Rose Garden Pavilion when it was completed as a sign of admiration for the work that he, the then Lord Mayor and Alderman, was doing for the city. This building is a last thread to his legacy. It represents memory and community and generosity. This campaign group have heard so many stories from so many different generations about what that building means to them. Yes, part of that is that it's a meeting place and a cafe, but its architecture and how it looks is woven into those memories and is a physical link to history that we are losing from so many parks and public places at this moment in time. A building that isn't even 100 years old should not be at risk of demolition. The situation that we are in now is because of this council and the previous council's years of neglect. Nobody has maintained that building, reactive repairs at best have been done. In 2018, the council was made aware that the building was in a serious state of disrepair, and yet nothing was done. It is disgraceful that its history is now at risk because of your inaction, and the people of Sheffield still have had no apology for that neglect. You say that this building is at its end of life, we do not agree, 11,000 people do not agree. Demolition is not an option that we even consider viable. We will, as the campaign group, fully support fundraising to repair the cafe once we know the target we need to work towards, but what we don't want is an additional lengthy consultation progress which will damage the building to a further extent as it is left to crumble while you do that. These 11,000 signatures already show you the support there is for the repair of the building. We are asking this council to commit to repairing, improving, improving, sorry, and reinvigorating the cafe building. We want its history to remain, and we want new generations to make memories there. We want this building to shine in all its glory as a link to our past and future so that JG Graves's legacy and his generosity will be remembered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. I reckon that was three and thirty-one, Liz. Thank you very much for your speech, and I'm now going to call on councillor Brian Lodge, who is chair of the Charity Trust Subcommittee, to respond. You have up to five minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Could I just say, very well done in presenting the petition there for many of us in here when we first stand up and speak here in the chamber, it's quite daunting, I think you were brilliant in your presentation there. Thank you for bringing that petition along, and thank you for everybody that signed it. It's quite clear there is a great love for that building in there, in Graves Park, not just from the people that live locally, not just from the people of Sheffield. As you've said there, it's from across the country that people are recognising the value of Rose Garden Cafe and that building. And it's one of the things, as you heard, I mentioned in response to questions, that we are looking, and my colleague again will speak later in this debate, that we are looking to submit a listing application for the building. Not sure whether it will be successful, but it allows us the opportunity to look and see whether that is viable, and that will help us towards looking at additional funding to deliver a building that is right and fitting in the location that's there. I just want to reassure you on a couple of things, the points that you raised, and if you attended the Charitable Trust Subcommittee, let's get that right, last week, it was raised in there about the terminology that's used about the building at end of life. It is a technical term that the structural surveys have been conducted, the surveyors have been doing those, it's a term that's used. It's not particularly helpful in situations like this, but it is the terminology that's used in there. But I want to reassure you, there are no plans at the moment on demolishing the building, and we need to get a full appraisal of what's going on. The propping of the building started last week and will be finished on Friday of this week, the 4th of November. At that point, we can then commission a full structural survey where they can actually get into the roof beams. The surveys that have been conducted so far have been done externally, looking at the building and looking at the condition and without going inside because it was considered so dangerous. It's very, very disappointing and upsetting that the building had to be closed with such short notice. And, you know, and I think for everybody in this room, my heart's to go out to the people that were working there, and I can see Julie's here now, and people there, that lost their jobs at that point in time, particularly the current situation that we're all seeing out there. And I think, you know, I think from behalf of everybody in here, we hope that things are being, that the employers are looking. are being, that the employers are looking after you and you are managing to find alternative employment while this is ongoing. The intention of the council through the Charitable Trust as the corporate trustee, there are, the only options available to us, and it seems quite stark when you look at that, is do nothing, fence itself and keep people out. It's refurbish the building and get it reopened. There's the option to demolish and put a modular building on there. There's the option to replace it with a traditional building or there's the option to just demolish and clear the site. They're the only five things that could actually be done, but it's not the intention at the moment to demolish the building. It seems quite stark if you're reading the reports that it's down there saying that these are options that are presented there, but there's nothing else really that can be done. If you're not going to refurbish it, you're not going to do anything with it. So, it just has to lay out those options there. What the Charitable Trust Subcommittee has done, we have written to the Charities Commission to ask for their opinion on the options that are presented. If there are things within there that they say are just a no-go, then that takes them out. We will wait for the response of the Charities Commission to those questions and then we will also have the results of the structural survey that will be conducted and then a full options appraisal will be conducted then to look at what we're doing. It is the intention to work with the campaign group and the Friends Group and the interested parties in there. Brew Kitchen as the operators will be invited to go and assess whether they can offer a facility from the building when the propping is all in place and the building is safe to access. And that will also help us to assess the options going forward, whether they can operate as a takeaway service in. I've not been up seeing, I've seen outlined plans of the propping that's going in there. It's quite extensive, I understand, that's going in there. So, we need to make sure that they give them the opportunity to look at what they can deliver from the building. We do want to get the views of the broad range of stakeholders and people who use the cafe and across the whole city and we will look to assess that as part of the consultation. I agree with you, we don't want to see a long, lengthy consultation going forward. And so we will, you know, we will look to get the opinions of stakeholders and people across the whole city as to what we can do there. We are committed to work with the campaign group and the Friends Group to ensure that there is a facility delivered in that, in the park. And my colleague will make contact with you to look at where we are going to do with looking at things and supporting where we can around an application for listing and also around lottery funding that will be in there. And I think Janet will mention that later on. Thank you very much once again for bringing the petition. Thank you to everybody for signing it and coming on. The strength of feeling and support for that whole, for the building and the facility out there is well known across the whole of the city and I think probably most people in this building will have visited at some stage, either as kids with their kids or with grandchildren. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I'm now going to call on councillor Richard Williams, who's Deputy Chair of the Charity Trustee Subcommittee. He's also the Chair of the Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee, so he's slightly two-hatted, but he's looking at it from all angles.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you for your petition. And I must say, I would like to congratulate you on bringing a petition with over 11,000 signatures to it. I mean, that's a testament to your hard work, but it's also a testament to the depth of feeling there is locally, in the local community, but I think also across the whole city and from what I've heard this afternoon outside the city as well. So, thank you. With regard to the specific request of the petition, I have a tremendous amount of sympathy with you and totally understand where you're coming from. I get it. However, frustratingly, at this time, the council doesn't have enough information to properly commit to a way forward and that is frustrating. Until the results of the planned structural survey are complete, I think it would be premature. I'm not an engineer, but it is conceivable that the building is beyond repair. I sincerely hope that the recommendation comes back from the report is it can be repaired or restored. There are several options, as Brian has already touched on, for the council, but I think until the facts are known, I believe it's prudent to wait. However, what can be reassuring is the council's commitment to work with various community groups and stakeholders, the Friends of Graves Park, the Save the Rose Garden Cafe campaign and simply the wider city community to find a solution to this intolerable problem. A reflection of this is the commitment by Liberal Democrat councillors in both Graves Park and Bee Chiefs and Breedhall Ward to allocate £10,000 each to a Rose Garden Cafe Restoration and Repair Fighting Fund. So, finally, most importantly, it is clear that what's happened with the Rose Garden Cafe must be a significant wake-up call for the council. In my opinion, we have to take a serious look at how we manage our buildings and we need to bring the management of the buildings closer to the communities affected by our decisions and we have to review the relationship between the income generated in the parks and heritage going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. I'm now going to call on councillor Marianne Elliott. I'm now going to call upon councillor Marianne Elliott, who is the Group spokesperson for the Green Party on Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee. You've got two minutes, Marianne.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you to the petitioners. I'm going to speak on behalf of the Green Group on this matter as I'm the spokesperson for the Communities Parks and Leisure Committee and we feel it's appropriate to refer this to parks. I recognise it's not a straightforward matter. It's already come to various committees, parks, finance, charities, also the lack now for council. The council's new governance structure is clearly a good thing. It allows more public participation, more transparent decision-making and cross-party participation. But I can also sense the frustration of the campaign group with the issue being passed around from one committee to the other. It's clear there is determination from the campaign group to seek answers about past decisions and also to find a way forwards. There are clearly some issues resulting from outsourcing. And although the Greens believe in the importance of having a strong council looking after community assets, not outsourcing, we recognise that's not happened historically due to political choices. We also recognise that the provision of a cafe in Graves Park is part of the park facilities. Outsourcing to various organisations has resulted in successive leases which don't address the need for the upkeep of the Rose Garden Cafe building. So, it's deteriorated badly and that's clearly a problem. Moving forwards, the organisations operating within Sheffield's parks need to have clear agreements with the council regarding liability for repairs and maintenance. Regarding the Rose Cafe Garden Building, a sensible way forwards would be a commitment that the Parks Department will deal with the operational aspects of this issue. It's appropriate for the Parks Department to take this on as their best place to look at the needs of Graves Park in the context of all the other parks in the city. This is important so that the needs can be balanced with the needs of other parks. It would be more difficult for the Charities Committee, for example, to assess this as they don't have the same overview of all the parks in Sheffield. Can I just finish? Sorry, yeah. It's really clear that there have been some issues with communication and trust over the years. The Friends of Graves Park group have been disappointed and this has led to mistrust. I've heard many statements from people indicating this at the campaign meeting in Graves Park in the summer and also the recent lack meeting and this breakdown of trust must be acknowledged. So, I hope it's possible to see the trust rebuilt and I hope that the Ward councillors are taking an active role in this by forming good working relations with the Friends of group. I certainly know that officers are working hard on the issues around the Rose Garden Cafe and thank them for that. It's my understanding that the propping up works will enable a new survey to be carried out and then it will be clearer what is needed and hopefully the interested parties can all work together and cooperate to achieve the shared aim of getting a cafe back in the park and this needs to be overseen by the Parks Committee in an open and transparent manner.
Thank you for getting through there. I'm now opening up for debate. I'm going to call on councillor Janet Riddler to speak. Janet, is this your maiden speech? Right, so Janet's maiden speech, let's all listen attentively, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. As the council's heritage champion, I welcome the petition which has come before us today as I recognise the importance of the Rose Garden Cafe to its local community and to Sheffield, both in terms of its history and heritage and also as an important cafe facility serving thousands of people who regularly use Graves Park. The Rose Garden Cafe is an iconic heritage building which holds a special place in the hearts of local people. Having grown up myself in Norton, the cafe or pavilion as I still think of it holds many personal memories for me too. The petition brought before us today by Liz Nat shows the passion and determination of local people to restore and protect the building. I would like to put in an application to Historic England, asking them to grant listed building status to the Rose Garden Cafe. If successful, this will validate the building's importance as a heritage asset and will support us in protecting the building through opening up new external funding opportunities. And I would like to meet with Liz and the Save the Rose Garden Cafe Campaign Group and others so that we can work together on this application. If Historic England grant this listing, then this will be an important and positive step in recognising the importance of the building as a heritage asset and I am grateful to have the support of my colleagues in Labour Group in putting forward this course of action. The Rose Garden Cafe is an important and unique heritage building in Sheffield and as such, I'm determined to do everything I can to preserve it for future generations to enjoy. I'm grateful to the petitioner for bringing this petition before us today and I look forward to meeting with you at the earliest opportunity so that we can begin taking positive and practical steps to help restore the Rose Garden Cafe. Thank you, Chair.
Congratulations on a very well-made maiden speech. And now I'm going to call on councillor Ian Auckland to speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations, councillor Riddler, on your maiden speech, a fine maiden speech. Congratulations, Liz, and the petitioners, but particularly Liz. At any time, my service on this council, I'd have been proud of the speech that you've just delivered and I hope members take great note of it. Bit downhill after this. I say, 'Save our cafe', no for demolition! That is absolutely the clear objective of the campaign. Over the years, longstanding members in this chamber will have heard me rattle on about charitable status and protecting Graves Park. And very often, I have felt that the councillors, trustees, chiefly Labour councillors, discharging through cabinet their obligations, have failed to make a proper distinction between charitable status and the council's general policy. And I detect signs of it, actually, Lord Mayor, in the, some of the answers I've heard today. Some of them are heard with hope and some of them are heard with despair. This park is governed by a deed, a modern charitable deed, so given by J.G. Graves, one of Sheffield's greatest benefactors. That deed says that the first call on the charity's money is to maintain, is to maintain the charity's assets, not to leave it to fall to rack and ruin, not to shuffle off repairing the cafe to facilities management who have got more than enough to do. I fully recognise that, but the first call on the money is that park and its assets. And when the council gives money to that charity, it doesn't belong to the council anymore, it belongs to the charity as a charity. And in short, I have called in the past for Graves Park to be made a fielding trust declaration, voted down. That would give it a great deal of protection. I ask the council collectively as trustees to commit to protect every blade of grass in Graves Park and not sell any of it off or dispose of it or let it fall to rack and ruin. And finally, indulge me, Lord Mayor, if local trustees, local councillors through the lack, were made trustees of that park in collaboration with local people as equal partners, then in 2018, when there was a report saying that the roof was non-operational and about to fail, something would have been done about it four years ago. And when a report comes in a few weeks ago saying it's about to fall down, it wouldn't take several weeks for somebody to turn up with fifteen minutes' notice to say, 'Clear the building'. So, no to demolition, save that cafe. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
It's good to see there's still fire in the belly there, councillor Auckland. No, no, no. It is certainly a question which you raised there, which I'm not sure that was answered, which is why we did know in 2018 but didn't do anything. I don't know whether anybody can answer that question. Okay. I think my next speaker here is councillor Douglas Johnson.
Yeah, thank you for that. So, first of all, congratulations to people for collecting a huge number of signatures. Almost makes it sound like loads of people use the park, so that's good. Congratulations too to councillor Riddler, that was a very gracious speech there and it's good to get heritage champion in this, good to talk about things like, you know, listing. On the charity side though, I wanted to say that I am a member of the Charities Board Subcommittee that deals with the council's function as trustee of the charities. And the council holds many charities of many parks across the city. I think there's about twenty of them. And it's, I just wanted to try and bring this back to get things done more down to earth. Some lovely rhetoric there from Ian, but actually, let's not imagine that the building's just going to fall down. Let's not go too far scaremongering. It's not about to fall down. The building's got a wonk on it. It bulges out, it clearly wants some work doing and actually I think we do need to focus on the work that needs to be done to get the building, actually it was, up and running again so it can be used for the purposes that it was to service the park and the people in it. And so, to some way, there is a bit of a distraction about talking about charitable rights and everything, you know, the legal easements, the deeds of trust and so on. Because the bottom line is actually, the charity doesn't stand on its own two feet. The charity is the park as a whole, not just the cafe. The cafe rents paid some contribution towards keeping the whole park going, but actually, you've got to remember that it's not the charity running it, it's the fact that the council puts in by far the majority of the money from its own resources each year to this park, as it does with other parks across the city. And the bottom line is, we want some more money to do with the building, don't we? We need to focus on that instead of all the frickeries around it. We need to think about how we get more money in all our parks because there are parks right across the city that are desperately short of investment. And so, as Randall was saying, actually, I think it is important to deal with the consultation and I completely understand why I say we don't want consultation, we just want to get on with it. So, that would be the first choice, obviously, but given that there isn't just a batch of money sitting there and, you know, some workmen standing by ready to get on with it, there needs to be a serious discussion about what is the building? Can it be propped? Can there be some minimal work to allow its operation? Does it need complete rebuilding? Let's hope not. It'd always be in favour of reuse before demolishing and rebuilding.
Douglas, it's got very red. Douglas, it's got very red.
I will stop then, I'll just say engage with the consultation. Beg your pardon, thank you everyone.
This is obviously something that stirs everybody's passion, isn't it? And quite rightly. My final speaker is councillor Richard Shaw.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you to the petitioners and questioners, and congratulations to councillor Riddler on a fine maiden speech. Almost 100 days ago, staff were given fifteen minutes' notice to get out of the cafe. It's a disgrace the way that they have been treated and their jobs at risk. This Labour-led council has had a report in 2018 saying the roof was in bad condition, the building in poor condition. 2018! How much money is it now going to cost to repair and restore the building because of Labour's four wasted years? Four unnecessary years of further deterioration of the building because they've been sat on their hands? If they'd done something four years ago, the cafe would still be open and its staff would still be in their jobs. Over the past 20 years, whether it's the cafe or Cognac Cottage, the Norton Nursery Sites or the Arboretum, Labour have shown that they cannot be trusted with our heritage. And I welcome the very, very late realisation of the importance of the cafe and the seeking of its listing. It's time for local councillors, through the lack and local people, to be appointed trustees of the park to safeguard our heritage. Given the importance of the park and the cafe to the people of South Sheffield and Sheffield as a whole and beyond, my colleagues in Beechif and Greenhill Ward and Graves Park Ward have placed a total of £20,000 towards the restoration and repair of the park. And given the park's importance to the city as a whole, might I suggest that if there is any unallocated citywide still available as well, that that be considered to go towards the restoration and repair of the park? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. We now come to summing up the debate. And I'm going to offer a right of reply to Liz. Now, I understand you want to share it with Andy, but you get one and a half minutes each if you're both doing it, just so that we're clear, okay?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I would just like to say firstly, with regards to the listing application, I think that's a positive step. I do have concerns that getting it listed could therefore mean that the refurbishment and repair of that cafe then becomes exponentially more expensive. So I just want to tread that with caution and raise that as a possible concern. But, you know, in terms of getting additional funding for repair, I think it's a good step, and thank you very much for, you know, taking those steps. I would just like to reply to Douglas Johnson. When you say that that building is not about to fall down, if that was the case, I don't really understand why people were not allowed in it, why it's had to be propped, why it had to be closed, and why it was so unsafe for it to be entered if it wasn't about to just fall down. That doesn't seem to be what we've been told by the council in their reports and in all the information that we've had. Otherwise, Brew Kitchen and those twelve members of staff could still be in there. I am going to also hand over to Andy Kershaw, who's co-chair of the campaign, who will also reply.
Thank you. Thank you very much indeed. Thanks to all our elected members and our wonderful campaign team that have got us to this position. Thanks to all of you. Deep joy that love has broken down in this chamber. You know, there's this kind of rainbow coalition of you that have come together to support the Rose Garden Cafe, but let's not forget how we got here. Fourteen years this operator has been in this cafe, and it's generated £350,000 in rent plus a share of the profits in that cafe. Not one penny has been spent on repairs and maintenance. Now, you've all dropped the ball over this, shamefully, and I heard somebody at the Charity Trust Subcommittee say, well, the compensation for the workers is a matter for the employers. They're out of work as a direct consequence of that neglect and that failure. So the responsibility is not on the employer, it's on this council. And as trade unionists in this council, I want you to remember the twelve people that will be out of a job at Christmas, that have been out of a job for a hundred days on Friday. That's what this campaign is about, not just that building. And as far as end of life is concerned, all of the Tudor houses in Stratford have been knocked down, wouldn't they, if we use that analogy? Nobody's ever said this about Westminster Abbey, have they? A thousand years ago, nobody said, well, in about a thousand years' time, that'll be at the end of its life and we'll have to knock it down. Or at a ridiculous concept, any building can be repaired, given the wish and the will and the money. Now, talk about money. I've just seen on Monday's Finance Subcommittee agenda, a nice report from Mr Keyworth. Is he in the building, Mr Keyworth? He says, as a result of the Liz Truss financial meltdown and the Bank of England's rise in interest rates...
Andy, Andy, sorry, can I just remind you that we don't have any criticism of that way of our officers?
No, no, I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm quoting Mr Keyworth.
I just want to be very clear.
No, no, absolutely, I'm not criticising him, I'm praising him, madam Lord Mayor. I'm praising him, because he said that there's been an unexpected windfall to the council's finances of an additional £730,000 in interest this year, as of this month, as a result of the Bank of England's raising of interest rates following the quasi-quotting Liz Truss fiasco. So I thank you all for your support. Don't forget why we got here. Don't forget that somebody dropped the ball, and we have a long way to go. And thanks to Janet Riddler, and to Brian, and to the Green councillors, and the Liberal Democrats in Graves Park and Beechif and Greenhill, who have been absolutely wonderful with that 20 grand. Let the love continue for the Rose Garden Cafe.
Right, is councillor Lodge going to continue this autumn of love? Can I just say, I'm going to call on councillor Brian Lodge to respond for up to two minutes, and then propose a course of action to be taken in response to the petition. I'm going to remind you all that there are two courses of action available to the council based on the nature of this petition. We can either note the petition and take no alternative action to that already being taken for the reasons put forward in the debate, or we can refer the petition to a relevant committee dealing with this issue, or an executive director for consideration, having regard to the comments made by members during the course of the debate. So those are your options, councillor Lodge, thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for the contributions this afternoon. I can't not comment on some of the comments that came out there from councillor Auckland, because councillor Auckland, you were a cabinet member, joined a period from 2009, you were a trustee. So let's be honest about things in here. It's all well and good. I think it started off, it was very well-intentioned, and people were making genuine contributions and concerned and saying what we wanted to do. Councillor Auckland, you seem to be rewriting history and forgetting you personally were one of the members of the Cabinet that were the trustees. You are also a local councillor that has never made representations about additional funding to be spent on the Rose Garden Cafe. Now, if we, you know, if we try to be honest about these things and not lose them to...
Brian, Brian, hang on. We give everybody the courtesy of a hearing here, and we give them the hearing in silence. At the end of what they've said, we may then agree or disagree in the way we respond, but during somebody speaking, we listen courteously. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I will put my hands up and say, yes, I've been on the Cabinet as a trustee of the Graves Park Trust, and yes, you know, we could have done things better, but don't just rewrite history and ignore the fact that you also were a trustee and you were serving on that committee. When funding has been realised from the sale of Cognac Cottage and that was reinvested into the park, there were no representations made from councillor Auckland or his colleagues there to say that money needed to be spent on the Rose Garden Cafe building. So let's be honest with things in here and going through. Thank you, everybody, for the contributions this afternoon. Congratulations.
Lord Mayor, there's a suggestion in that, that I'm being less than honest. And I'd just like to be clear, it's actually my experience of being in Cabinet. So when you look at how I've campaigned at Graves Park Ward, the issue about trustees...
Did you have a point of order, councillor Auckland? Because if you didn't, then I suggest you do just sit down and we listen courteously, and we can argue in another time about this, because there are going to be plenty of opportunities, aren't there? I don't think that anybody has impugned your honesty. I certainly haven't heard that, so please sit down, councillor Auckland. Thank you. Here we have the bit where you all don't notice that I'm standing up because I'm short. Fine. Let's just debate this. Let's not heckle, because I think everybody has got very strong feelings about this. And as far as I can tell, everybody wants to save Rose Cottage Cafe. I do, because I believe it's going to have cake in it. So let's just listen, let's have cool heads about this, because we need cool heads to make sure we make good decisions. So thank you, everybody. Brian, would you like to start again?
No, not starting again.
Actually, not start again.
No, no, no.
No, 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 let's rephrase that, carry on from where you were. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, and congratulations councillor Riddler on your maiden speech there. And it's not very often many of us get the opportunity today to make a maiden speech on something quite as important as what we've heard in here today. Lord Mayor, from the options presented to us in there, it's quite clear, the Charitable Trust Subcommittee is already looking at this, and we've commissioned work that's going through, and I'd like to make the recommendation that this is referred back to the Charitable Trust Subcommittee, and we await the outcome of the survey reports and the response from the Charities Commission, so we can do a full detailed appraisal of the options available to us.
Thank you. Okay, who's... Oh, right, so the proposal is that we refer the petition to a relevant committee, having regard to the comments made by members. So at the moment, the relevant committee is the Charities Subcommittee, and it may certainly from there move to other relevant committees, such as the Finance Committee or the Strategy and Resources Committee, if necessary. Hang on, hang on, hang on. That would be the path, because we now have committees, don't we? Not individual people making decisions. So, would you like to ask something, councillor Mohammed?
I think... Do you want to do it, Richard, if you like?
Okay.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I'd like to second that proposal.
Right, and now councillor Johnson, you've got a different idea.
I always have a different idea, Lord Mayor, but actually, I haven't got a different idea. I just wanted to second the proposal that was made earlier on by councillor Elliot, that this matter is referred to the Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee, principally because that's a committee that has staff functions and a budget, whereas the Charity Commission can only talk.
Although that's a lovely idea, because it's come from you, Douglas, the actual committee that has to first consider it is the Charities Committee, because it comes under that aegis, because it is the park, and it's the building in the park, not actually the running of the park itself. It may well be that it will end up there, but at the moment, the first port of call, I believe, has to be the charity sub. You can disagree, but I'm going to rule on that, I think, because I'm the Lord Mayor and I can do that.
Well, I'd like to vote on it, because it is a proposal, it is something that's been discussed informally, we've not had any legal advice, they can't be done. It would seem to be a sensible proposal, and whether people agree with it on, I don't know, but that's the purpose of the vote.
I think that the fact that the chair of the committee you're trying to refer it to, who is also the vice-chair of the Charities Committee, has seconded the proposal that that's where it goes first, would probably indicate that that's where it ought to go first, and maybe in good time, come to the committee that you're proposing.
Point of order, please, Lord Mayor. Point of order, please, Lord Mayor. My understanding is it's with the Charities Subcommittee because of the status that the building and the park hold, and therefore I don't believe that lawfully we have any choice, and I think it would perhaps be helpful to hear from Mr Hollis on that point.
Good thinking.
That is where it is seized at the moment, and that would be the next place for it. And the council as a charity trustee would need to make a decision in line with the trustee. If having done so, there are other options, they may then go on to other committees.
I think he just said that in better legal ease than me. Right, I'm going to put this to a vote. Can I ask those in favour of the proposal from councillor Brian Lodge? Oh, hang on, how do we vote? Have we got to, could we do this by show of hands, or has it got to be... Okay, can I have a show of hands, please? Those in favour of the proposal from councillor Lodge? Yeah, he's called councillor Lodge. I would say that was decisively carried. But you may get your wish in due course. Would you like to vote against or abstain? I'm so sorry, I've got that... Okay. So what we have agreed is that this will go to the Charity Subcommittee, and that they will consider all that they have heard today, both from the proposer of the petition and from members of this council about the way forward. And once they have agreed that, there may be chance for it to go to a different committee. Thank you very much. Right. And I think after all the excitement we've had, we're now going to have a ten-minute comfort break. Thank you all very much. To basically relegate members' questions until item, I guess it would become item nine on the agenda, so that we take the notice of motion in order beforehand. Okay, I've had a proposal from councillor Hurst, is there a second? Oh, gosh, lots of them. And is there an alternative...
Yeah, no, Lord Mayor, we would object to this.
Joe, Joe, hang on. Is there an alternative proposal? Oh, councillor Otten.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I propose we don't do that, on the grounds that members' questions are an essential part of the scrutiny function of this council. I'm not afraid of scrutiny in my role as committee chair, I hope other committee chairs aren't either, and the proposal to move it down would not allow the time for members to ask supplementary questions that we would normally have. So I propose we don't do that.
Lord Mayor, I'm afraid I must interject, we have people in the balcony waiting for motions to be debated, and that was the reason for the request.
Right. Very quickly, Mick.
Yeah, the members' questions and supplementary questions can be asked any time. They don't have to be asked before council, there are ways and means of doing it by...
Hang on, is this a speech?
No, no, I asked if I could speak.
Yeah, but this appears to be a speech, I think we're just having procedural motions. We'll just vote on all of them.
I thought I was allowed to speak, Lord Mayor.
I'm sorry, I did start letting you, and then I stopped, and I apologise. Right. Very, very quickly. If it's a speech...
It's not a speech.
Because I will stop you.
So basically, if members of the public are here for a moment...
So basically, if members of the public are here for a motion, I'm sure we're happy to move that motion up. And then we can then go back to...
No, no, shafak.
Members' question.
Sit down. I'm going to get grumpy. Brian. Okay, so I have two motions, one that we move straight to motions and then have members' questions after that. And I think it's just a straight yes, no, isn't it really? So let me just check with Paul. Do I need to do it by voting, voting? Show of hands. Okay, all those in favour of the proposal by councillor Hurst, please show. Thank you. And those against. Right, thank you. I think that is lost, in which case we will now go to questions and answers. I think you've all got it as a supplementary. So... I'll go page by page, try... I'm going to go page by page. Please try to attract my attention if you have a supplementary. So we start off, I think it's... Oh, hold on. Paul has just pointed out to me that I've left out... What page is it? That I have left out page 18, so apologies. We're on questions on urgent business, there have been none. And we're now on 5.2, questions on the joint authorities. This item of business is to provide an opportunity for members of the council to ask questions on the discharge of the functions of the South Yorkshire Joint Authorities for fire and rescue and pensions and of the South Yorkshire Merrill Combined Authority. Are there any questions to those? Nope. Okay. And now we're... Yeah. Okay, so here we go on the questions and answers to chairs of committees. Page one. Douglas.
Lord Mayor, sorry, can we just ask, how long is there for members' questions? As long as it takes.
It's half an hour, so we'll be finishing this at about 10 to 5. Douglas.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Fox, yeah, as a leader. Investment zones, they're a big and topical issue since it came out in the government's kind of false start of a statement in September. I share a lot of the views here that you set out, which we agree on, about the need for environmental protections, ecological wildlife protection.
What's your supplementary question, Douglas?
The question is, have you agreed with that? And the fact that it says that we lay down clear red lines with government, the question is whether you're aware that the combined authority that's actually put in the application doesn't refer to any of this at all in its submission to government.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And apologies to members of the public who have come to listen to a debate, but obviously you have seen that a number of people do not want to debate but rather ask me a question. There was at a meeting, you've been at the same meetings, councillor Douglas.
Can I... Hang on, hang on, let's have answers to questions here.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think it's a very, very serious precedent that's been set today, that when members of the public come to here in order to motion...
No, no, Terry, Terry, that's... We've passed that. Can you answer Douglas's question, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I really think it's an absolute shocking precedent when members of the public have come here, members of the public have come here to listen to a debate.
Hang on, okay.
I'm sorry, Lord Mayor, but I just think if it was all the members to come to listen to this, we would have been treated...
Terry, yeah, once again, this short woman is standing up. I know that people are unhappy about how it went, but let's just get through this as quickly as we can so that we can get on to motions. So can you just answer Douglas, please?
Lord Mayor, councillor Douglas Johnson has been at every meeting I've been at and obviously has heard the conversations that I've had.
Right, page two.
Thank you for your answer. We'll get on to motions shortly. On question three, we've got a question here about, given what we've just said and the big issues at stake, there are investment zones and the future for City and the whole region. The question is effectively, will you agree to any further decision when we get to the point of it being binding on the council and the combined authority coming to full council as opposed to any other committee?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and obviously, no matter... We will discuss, coming back to the yes and no, whatever recommendations come forward from the government, et cetera. As we know, the levelling up secretaries took it on and has already made certain statements about biodiversity, about the environment, et cetera. And obviously, that will come back to the committee for us to make a decision on.
Thank you. Page three. Page four. Page five.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I just wanted to clarify this point. So can you confirm that in your opinion it's fine for chairs to add or delete items to any agenda with no notice to officers, members or the public?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor David. I would say that I would recommend that you work within the constitution and every chair should work within the constitution of this council.
Thank you. Page six. Councillor Parek.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just to follow up to part of councillor Johnson's response, cooperative housing is a tool we can use to fix our broken housing market by giving people much more control over their own housing conditions, meaning they're not the mercy of private landlords. It's surprising to hear the committee chair say that work was not taken forward on scale of cooperative housing because of a much improved relationship with the private rented sector in the city. We know there are huge problems with the private rented sector in Sheffield, problems that have been made worse over the cost of living crisis and with the government arming over scrapping section 21. That said, your allocation to allocate some land to self-built housing cooperatives is welcome. Please can I, A, confirm that this has been added to your committee's work programme and what timeframe you're suggesting for this? I agree, it would be really great to see some cross-party working on this to explore cooperative solutions for the housing crisis.
Thank you. In terms of cross-party working and sentiment, I'm sure it's there, it's not on the work plan because of so many other pressing things on the work plan. And so that's simply where we are. That's the reality of the pressure of work with all committees, but I think it's a cross-party position we'd take then.
Okay, page seven. Sophie.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillor Riddler on her fantastic maiden speech. Councillor Johnson, you've said that it's over two years since it's been first reported. Attempts are made around 100 days apart from each other and only now is the council considering a legal route to fix a fire safety repair. Now, once again, we're seeing increases in the housing repairs backlog creep back in. Not only has that left tenants across the city, including in my ward, living in drafty, insecure, mouldy and cold conditions, but it's left these residents blatantly unsafe from fire. Councillor Johnson, under your chairship of Housing Committee, God forbid a fire should break out, how do you account for this?
Thank you. You're probably aware there's a backlog of repairs. I don't know the details of that particular one, but, you know, there is a lot of work going to fire safety and as I understand it, that is one area that the repair service is really quite on top of. When you get things like a two-year delay, that's obviously something that's out of line of the ordinary. That's all I can say.
Okay.
Question two on page seven, Lord Mayor. Councillor Johnson, I'm just wondering, as there is a 10% uptake in online reporting of repairs and from July to September, around 15% increase in calls has led to a near doubling of the longest waiting time. I'm just wondering how you can square the circle on that for me, please?
I'm not sure you can square the circle on that. I think the contact centre times are just ridiculously long and that's what tenants have to put up with. It's plainly not acceptable, as we all agree in our committee, haven't we?
More questions on another one?
On to page eight.
Okay.
Page eight, question three. So nearly half of logged repairs are overdue and it's over now two years since I first raised this with local residents as an issue with toilet water leaking into kitchens, mould ruining their homes, their windows boarded up. And it was described by cabinet member at the time, Labour councillor Paul Wood, as a horror show. It still is. When are we going to get on top of this issue?
Ongoing piece of work, I guess, and that's what the committee has been looking at. As you know, we've regularly discussed it at the briefings and in the committee. So I think it's fair to say that we know that the repair service in the council has got this massive backlog, is not on top of the game now, but it is getting towards there and there are definite signs there. It's just that it is a big backlog and it's going to take some time to get through. But, you know, the progress is moving in the right direction, even though actually the figures show that over the last three months, normally they've gone backwards a bit. But, you know, there is definite approach there with a bit of new leadership in the senior team, a lot more enthusiasm in the workforce on the front line, who are, you know, more committed to getting the job done.
Question four, Lord Mayor. So with the pressures that you have mentioned, the budgetary pressures on the housing revenue account, would you agree that these can be summarised as national context and the council's own failure to manage a successful and well-operated council house repair service since it was in-sourced? Because you've mentioned that disrepair claims from tenants and rent loss from vacant properties, I know that disrepair claims are costing us over £2.5 million. So would you say that's fair to summarise them as those two things?
Maybe not fair. I mean, if you want to have a go at the people who are actually trying to deal with backlog or repairs, then you could call that fair, but I wouldn't.
Question number six, please, still on page eight. Would there be a report on to the collapse of Avenside Roofing at the next Housing Committee meeting on the foreseen procurement and inflationary costs? So will there be a report by potentially next Housing Committee meeting on the foreseen procurement and inflationary costs you mentioned for the collapse of Avenside Roofing? I'm still on page eight. Question five, page eight.
Sorry, I thought you were looking, you said six.
Sorry, I might have overwhelmed them.
No, I'm not specifically looking at that on the committee, no, not on the 12th of November.
And then councillor.
Could I appeal to people to slow down when they're speaking because it's very difficult to understand the context and what was being said? I'm sure it's the same for people in the gallery. Thank you.
Apologies councillor, sometimes I do get a bit ahead of myself, so thank you for that.
Right, page nine.
Just the one on question number six. Thank you councillor Johnson, I do appreciate your answer and I appreciate that there are a lot of unknowns as we're going towards, you know, making decisions on how we're going to best solve the budgetary problems within the housing revenue account. And I appreciate that there's a lot of national context that we don't know.
Sophie, Sophie, let's have a question.
But I'm just wondering, are you considering yourself supporting increase in tenants' rent and if so, by how much?
So this is something that we've obviously discussed in the committee and there is a really important reason for wanting to increase tenants' rents. And I should have stressed, no decision's been made by the committee and, you know, something's been discussed. There is a really important role here because this is the only way to bring in money to the housing revenue account. So if we want to do things like increase the housing stock, if we want to do repairs, if we want to do retrofitting, insulation, and if we want to provide basic tenant services, the money needs to come in from somewhere. The point about the housing revenue account is it's entirely ring-fenced, so it's not subsidised by council tax or anything else like that. So rents are the only one. If we have a below-inflation rent increase, it means a cut in real terms.
Douglas, I'm going to have to interrupt you because I have a point of order from councillor Rooney.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm just wondering, is councillor Thornton a member of the Housing Committee?
Yeah. I don't have any further questions after this councillor Rooney.
That's all right, I just wondered because from the way you're asking my questions, you'd think you'd never heard of it.
Okay, okay. Thank you, both of you. Douglas, have you finished?
Not quite, just to explain that, yes, personally it would support an increase in rents. Question about how far that is, is to be decided, but an increase in rents is really important, largely because the vast majority of our tenants actually receive some form of housing benefit or even a personal credit. And that means that it's a really important way of transferring money from the treasury through housing benefit subsidy to tenants, to the council, to the local economy. That's really important. As you're aware, from our discussions in the Housing Committee, there is a government consultation on capping that, which means taking control away from local authorities, tying their hands behind their back and with a net effect of a massive reduction in the amount of money that's available for social housing, which is why, of course, we resisted that.
Thank you. Sophie, I suggest that as you are a member of the Housing Committee, these are things you should be raising in the committee in order to get debate going. No, no, no questions for a reason now, don't we? No reply on that, thank you Sophie. I'm just going to say that people who are on committees do have a chance to raise these things on their committees and that is the whole point of you being there to work on them. And I'm not accepting... No, I'm not taking a point of order. No, I'm not taking a point of order. I'm moving on and we're now on page 10. Don't shout at me. Page 10. Page 11. Mike, which page are you on? Are you on...
Lord Mayor, my questions will be swift and brief. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Question one. It states that the void council houses is currently 2.2% and yet next week, the Finance Subcommittee will receive a paper which says the void is around 3.5%. Can you confirm which is the correct number, please?
Thank you, Mike. What a lovely question.
It is lovely, isn't it? Yeah, thank you, as if someone who's not on the House Committee... Actually, I don't know the answer to that. Except, of course, the figures for the budget stuff are bouncing around all over the place, so they do go up and down and we'll have to see what it's actually looking like next week.
Okay.
I will ask for the answer to be got for you councillor Leebury as soon as possible.
Question two then.
Yeah.
3.5% has been consistent month on month for the last six months in Finance Subcommittee. Can you guarantee that the target will be hit in quarter one 23/24 because if it's 3.5% we're two years away from that working?
I don't see... No. For obvious reasons, I'm not because I'm saying won't be met, I'm just saying that no one could guarantee that. It is important that we work towards that though for lots of reasons, including finances and the impact on homeless people.
Thank you. And finally, third question.
Question are you referring to councillor Leebury?
Question seven now, I'm moving to. Okay. 80 days is the average time for customers actively bidding on a priority ban to get accounts passed. We are in a situation where many, many people, particularly single parent families, are under eviction notices. The question is, what is the target to get down to so that it isn't 80 days, but these people actually do not get evicted from their homes? Thank you.
I think it's a different thing from being evicted. This is about rehousing, so where you've got priority, if you rehouse, how long it takes. So it doesn't necessarily mean you're facing eviction or anything like that. Simple answer is, I don't know, we'll have to ask the officers that, so I guess we can get back to the written answer.
Right, so the answer will come back to you at a later stage councillor. Right, page 11. Sue. Oh, it's the lived and housing agenda. Come on. Sue, oh, it's the lived and housing agenda, come on.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Question two at the bottom of the page. Given that a constituent of mine has been waiting since, from May until this last week for her assessment, struggling in a house where she's having difficulty coping, can councillor Johnson tell us if there are any plans or processes underway to reduce this wait time?
Not sure whose idea it was to answer all these questions now instead of skipping us the end of the meeting, but anyway. No, so I'm just going to ask you a question now. You're asking about plans to get it done.
What plans have you to reduce that?
Yeah, we'll have to ask the officers. I mean, it's only with getting these questions, seeing just how many people are waiting for assessment health and housing team and it's something that councillor Abie and I have been looking at because that's far too long and there's far too many people and it seems to be a very long time to get a decision, so that's, let's get back on that one.
Right, well, there you are, hoist by your own petard Douglas. Right, 12. Cliff.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yeah, thank you for your answer councillor Douglas. So it's on insulation or missing insulation in cavity walls in council housing. You say that a thermal imaging survey needs to be done. When is this likely to be carried out? I mean, given the problems that we've got with, with cost of heating, this is really hitting tenants hard. No, it's a good point because we had some discussion earlier in the year about whether our priorities for investment in council housing go with a stock increase or go with investing in insulating homes precisely because of the cost of living. So this is one. In terms of the timescale, I, I don't know, we'll have to ask officers, I mean, actually if you're in touch with the patch officers, it's as good a starting point as any.
All right, right, page 13. How did I guess?
Thank you. I assume, I was hoping it was councillor Ickbell answering, but councillor Grokot. Question two, is it fair to assume that the assumed income that we could have got is now halved because of the delays that have occurred? Is that a fair assumption to make?
I honestly wouldn't like to say, but while I'm on my feet, can I just say thank you to my board colleague for excellent maiden speech councillor Riddler, well done today, but I can find out if you want.
You can ask officers.
I will, I will ask officers.
I mean, if it's delayed by six months, then six months of profit share is not going to happen. Okay, you gave an answer to question four of the total cost of the project. Could you give us a breakdown of what it's actually cost to have the containers on site and what the working assumption is of the removals? Because you've just simply given me the total project cost, I wouldn't mind a breakdown, happy for you to send that to me rather than answer, given the time issues. Okay.
I'm sorry that you're disappointed not to have councillor Ickbell. I certainly think that councillor Grokot is a very good substitute for him. Right, page 13. What, from Shaffack? No, on his first. Right, can I have page 14? Barbara.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And really this is to question one and question three. I mean, the answer to question one says there is currently conducted air quality monitoring and question three is pretty vague and says there will certainly will be a need for consideration of appropriate communication. Now, given the fact that sort of we are now entering into the cold spell and there has been a marked increase in the wood, the use of wood as a fuel, as well as coal, which I do recognise when I smell it, surely, I mean, can you give me a timescale? Because I think it's urgent rather than this vague will be, which could well take us into next year. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think it's absolutely right and fair question, so I will get on to officers with that and make sure that we pick that up and let you know if that's okay. Thank you.
Did you have a second question, did you say Barbara?
No, Lord Mayor, I combined the two. But I have got questions on the next page.
See, if I skipped a page, sorry, page 15.
Lord Mayor, right, I mean, basically, it's the answer to question two and I am concerned about the monitoring because I've been in the area and I've seen the, what certainly does seem to be increase in traffic. It says the count will only be done for the number of vehicles entering, that is not a fair reflection of all the vehicles sort of moving through the area. So that's the first question, which goes over to the next page. So can monitoring be done on the stretch of road? Because people divert onto it at various points, but the build-up on that junction going both ways is quite considerable. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you again councillor Masters, that's something that I will have to take up with officers. I'm not aware of the technicalities, whether we've got the equipment to do that, the cost that would be involved in that, but I will find out that information and get back to you with that.
Page 17.
Sixteen, Lord Mayor, still.
Oh, did I, sorry.
Right, it's question four. Now, it says that, it actually says on your website, which I did have open just now, which is down, shut down, of course, it says that air biro hold the data on the various pollution levels and I asked sort of how, specify the roads on which this information is held and how residents can access it. And yet on the, the answer only comes, covers diffusion tubes which only monitor nitrogen dioxide, yet it's a range of pollutants I presume that the air biro data holds. So, so can you sort of, you know, say where that data is held and where in the actual location as opposed to the three sites where the monitoring diffusion tubes are, can, you know, where they are and how the information can be accessed for the area, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's fair enough. We need, we need to find out where that's happening and make sure that that information is available.
Page 17.
Oh, Barbara. Right, thank you. And again, it's clarification really, questions five and question six. Now, I've talked to a lot of residents in that area and they're very concerned, but they still know very little about the consultation. And the fact is that sort of the answers to question five about where feedback will be obtained from is still quite vague. So can I please have clarification about exactly which roads or residents on which roads will be, will be consulted or get further information about the low traffic neighbourhood in Nether Edge? Because they were not consulted and they're still not being. The reason you're getting feedback is because sort of we've been sort of alerting people to the issues when they've come to us with the traffic chaos that's ensued in our board. Thank you.
Yes. Good answer. Right, page.
On a standing.
I only wish that Mazza was succinct. Page 18. Oh, I've got hundreds. Okay, Richard and then Lexi.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Grokot for your, for your answers to questions. It's question four on page 18. You said that we've been awarded a provisional maximum of £400,000. What is the minimum amount? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Pass, but I will find out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And can I just congratulate councillor Riddler on her maiden speech, which is great. And I'd like to ask the co-chair, Julie Grokot, isn't your answer that you've given a contradiction? Yeah, sorry. All right, sorry, I'll stand up. Yeah, I just wanted to ask, isn't your answer a contradiction in that you are rolling back on the active travel scheme? You have paused the scheme and you have actually watered it down. Why didn't you actually implement the full scheme and then consult on that?
I think it's fair to say that we in May picked up a complete dog's dinner with the active travel schemes. We were inundated with very unhappy residents about what was going on, how the, how the active travel schemes were working, what it meant for them. What we've been working very diligently on with the local councillors, through the local area committees, I understand, is to make sure that we take people with us, that we get these schemes right, so that people will use them, will understand what they're about and will see and reap the benefits of the schemes. So it's not about winding anything by, it's about making sure that these are right, so that everyone across the city, particularly in those areas, I think it links into some of the questions that councillor Masters has asked earlier in relation to people not understanding how they are working and why they are working. So it really is important that we do get these schemes right, that people can use them and that they do what we need them to do. So I think it's not a contradiction, it's about making sure that the schemes work for everyone, that they offer active travel, that they offer safe travel, that they are accessible for everyone to use however they wish to use them and that the city and travelling about the city can be enjoyed safely by everyone.
Page 19, Lexi.
Thank you. Yes. So on the clean air zone, can you confirm that there will be no further delays to the implementation? Can you confirm that no penalties will be incurred and no revenues lost as a result of any failure to implement the clean air zone? Can you confirm that taxi drivers will be able to claim funding for cleaner vehicles without delay and there will be no costly re-recruitment process, they'll have to be rerun?
Yeah, I think I answered all of those points when I answered the petition earlier, Lord Mayor.
Page 20. Have I missed one? Oh, right, I'm going to take.
Five more minutes.
I will, no, you haven't got five more, I will take one more question. I beg your pardon. If, what I wasn't faffing about and nobody else was, no. When I am speaking, you do not speak. That is a rule of this chamber. And I have ruled that councillor Turpin will be allowed to ask his question and then we will finish. And I wouldn't have had to have carried on if you hadn't faffed about yourself. Do carry on councillor Turpin.
Thanks, I'll be quick then. Julie, in saying we expect to miss two and a half million pound in income up to the first of June, does that mean we are expecting the CAS to be delayed till the first of June?
Mr. Pride on the questions that you asked. Perhaps you two can discuss this outside the chamber if you're not fully. That completes member questions. And we will now move on to page one. Right, so we're on item number six. We've moved on to notices of motion. So we have notice of motion regarding a renewable energy strategy for Sheffield. And this motion is given by councillor Christine Gilligan-Cubo and is to be seconded by councillor Douglas Johnson. Douglas, I hope you're ready. So there is a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for this item and Gillian, sorry Gillian, you get to propose this motion and you have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think anybody that was listening to the news would have recognised or heard that the world is not on track to meet the Paris Agreement goals by 2030. We do need to think about how Sheffield is going to meet its 2030 net zero. I also recognise that many Sheffield residents are facing a cost of living crisis. However, one of the principal causes of the rising prices is the cost of energy. Energy that currently the UK has to buy in the form of oil and gas that we purchase on global markets and then we are at the mercy of unscrupulous traders and multinational corporations here making excessive profits at our expense. The UK and Sheffield needs a more secure energy future and it needs a clean energy future. We can't do this without shifting away from fossil fuels. Locally produced renewable energy is the cheapest, greenest way forward. If we set up networks to produce our own clean energy, we will not be subject to the vagaries of the international markets. Once solar panels are installed, there are almost no running costs, the energy is virtually free and household bills can be reduced. So although this motion is primarily about thinking of how we can have an energy plan... Thank you. So this motion is primarily about local energy generation and the need for us to look at how we can start to encourage that in Sheffield. We also have to recognise that alongside photovoltaics, we need retrofitting, we need to reduce the heat loss as well as create clean energy. The University of Warwick estimates that residential building stock could save 28% of its primary energy consumption if buildings were properly insulated. So what we're asking for in this motion is a local sustainable or green energy plan that increases renewable energy generation in the city and offers opportunities for jobs and skills in the renewable energy sector.
A very well timed speech, thank you. And now I'm going to call on councillor Douglas Johnson to second this motion, up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And in seconding this motion, I think we really want to endorse everything that my colleagues has just said. It's a classic example of thinking globally and acting locally. So we must think globally and councillor Gilligan-Cubo's just said how we do that, and we must act locally. And you have that too, you have that in the motion which is very clearly laid out as a proposal for something to add to the work plan of the relevant committee. And as has been pointed out, it's not a substitute for insulating homes, we do that first, but it's a very, very important second stage. And of course, 10 years ago, we could have been doing this. For those people who've been around a long while, you'll remember there was the original Solar City proposal. And that was when this council had some ambition to really maximise its manufacturing expertise to set up large-scale solar energy generation. And so I was subject of a proposal from, from Green Council at the time, long before I was on the council, to benefit from the government incentives around feed-in tariffs. Sadly, that was voted down. Sadly, the sustainability team at the time was, you know, one of the first to be dismantled in the wave of redundancies in austerity and that's where we are. Had that happened, we would have been in a far better situation for everyone in the city now, with people with warmer homes, our tenants with cheaper bills, cheap bills in the council and a significant income contribution to our revenue budget, we'd be in a better position than we are today. So, but it's not too late to address that, we can still do this. All the councils have, you know, leapt a way ahead of us and are doing it. We have, you know, a lot of opportunities and especially as it ties in with our current work on issues on the local plan. So, but just, I just want to respond to a couple of the points that were in the amendments as alternative views are looking at things.
We are on red Douglas.
Well, in that case, I won't. Thank you very much.
I'm sure they would have been great. There are two proposed amendments and these are numbers one and two on the list of amendments which have been circulated at the meeting. And the first person I will call on is councillor Perrek to move amendment one for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And firstly, just to offer my congratulations to councillor Riddler for making her maiden speech, which was a fantastic maiden speech. Council, my energy bills and I'm sure those of everyone else in this room skyrocketed over the past year. And that's come both as a result of international uncertainty and the Russian invasion of the, of the... And that's come both as a result of international uncertainty and the Russian invasion of Ukraine. But we can't also forget it's down to this government's failure year on year to invest in renewables and deliver a green transition. That's the backdrop we're against. This motion speaks to developing renewable energy strategy for Sheffield and it's completely right to do so. While we're already a leader in renewable energy generation, generating more renewables than any comparable city, our ambition for Sheffield should be to build it as a powerhouse for clean growth and for new green jobs. What we're proposing, what we're proposing will ensure that a renewable strategy not only transitions us away from polluting fossil fuels, not only ends our reliance on Russian gas, but that it delivers for local communities too. That's why we want to connect this with our community wealth building charter and ethical procurement strategy, so we can generate green energy for greener communities and create local jobs for local people in so doing. As a representative of the cooperative party, I know that we need to unpick barriers to procurement that energy cooperatives currently face, so that we can democratis the energy sector and level the playing field between community-owned energy and privately-owned giants. We should be ambitious, because we need to be ambitious if we're going to successfully tackle the climate crisis. Our energy system is broken, we need a new energy production system that is cheap, green and owned and run by the people who will use it. And that's why Sheffield should back this plan for community-owned renewables and deliver for people and planet.
Right, I'm going to call now on councillor Ruth Milson to second the amendment.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and my congratulations to councillor Ridley on an excellent maiden speech. I'd like to thank the Green members who have brought this motion for an incredibly easy motion to get behind. No arguments there and all sorts of ideas and necessary ones, so no need to comment any further on those. And my colleague councillor Parek has given compelling arguments for the, some of the items that we would like to add to that motion. Ofgem has argued that local power grids are going to play a critical role in cutting our reliance on expensive gas imports and meeting our climate targets. And new locally-owned energy providers need to be able to gain access to the market at fair cost, which they can't currently do to provide energy locally. So our amendment seeks to renew this council's commitment to calling for the local electricity bill to become law. And the original motion alludes briefly to the buy-in of the wider community, but seems to stop short in terms of real citizen involvement in co-creation of an energy plan. And I know that colleagues across the chamber will be enthusiastic about best practice in that respect, such as projects led by the Carbon Co-op in North East England, which has citizen juries at its core. So, and of course, the South Yorkshire mayor has this at the heart of his strategy as well and has opened, in fact, an inquiry form at the moment on his website to join his citizens' assembly. And the Carbon Co-op's approach to harnessing the creativity that is stored within our communities is really key, so that's why we're putting emphasis in our amendment on using the potential of our local area committees and deploying the toolkit for public engagement that's at every committee's disposal in this new governance system. So I hope that colleagues will support our friendly amendment.
It does seem to be the new members who've got the grasp of succinctness, so that's a lesson for us older people here. Can I now ask Andrew Sanger to move amendment number two? And you can speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to congratulate councillor Ridley on an excellent maiden speech. Given the importance, Lord Mayor, of getting on to notice of motion number seven in the name of councillor Jane Dunn, I formally propose my amendment. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
There you are, I just said it and it happened. And now can I ask councillor Barbara Masters to second the amendment?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And again, congratulations to councillor Ridley on the excellent maiden speech, but I'm happy to sort of follow Andrew's lead to make time for the important debate that comes next, for the next motion. Thank you.
Gosh, we're having an outbreak of friendliness finally, thank you. Is there anybody who does want... Oh, councillor Turpin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Succinctness, now that's an interesting word. Just kidding. No, thank you very much for the Labour amendment, really good. Also Janet, excellent maiden speech. And I do really appreciate the friendly amendment, as you put it, Ruth. Just a couple of small criticisms that I would just say. On your part, E, where you say about producing a hundred kilowatts, I did at first wonder if that was a typo, because I don't think it was, it matches the ambition of the rest of your amendment. A hundred kilowatts for reference is about twenty terraced houses with solar panels on, so, and not that much. And the other criticism I just wanted to say is in part H, I think you're referring to the incinerator as renewable energy, when of course it's only renewable if you continue to mine fossil fuels and turn them into plastics. But other than that, brilliant amendment and thank you for that. Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I can't cope with this. Does anybody else want to speak on this or shall we... Ooh, Sophie?
Yeah, tell me though, just tell me how to do it. As people know, I am kind of on maternity leave, so I couldn't submit my own amendment to this. Whilst I'll be voting for the motion and the Labour amendment, I just wanted to say that I don't think that the current government are giving councils the correct toolkits to properly tackle this at the moment and that it is a shame that we're not really calling on government to extend our powers or asking the government to extend their own powers either. Personally, I would much prefer a state-owned renewable energy company which works for the people than a planet not-for-profit and I'd like to see the extension of the nationalisation of our national grid as well. So I'm just saying, I am supporting them, but I do think that they could have gone slightly further.
Sophie, I will extend to you the same offer which councillor Chinchan has. For people who are groups on their own, I will always formally second an amendment or motion if that is necessary.
Thank you, it was more a time factor for me at the minute than anything, but thank you very much.
No. Next question. Right, in that case, I don't think we have any further speakers, so in that case, I'm going to move to a vote on amendment number one, which was moved by councillor Minesh Parek. Okay, sorry. Okay, today is just not my day, is it? I'm so sorry, Christine, you do get a right of reply. And it's waived, great. And now we're going to vote, move to a vote on the amendment moved by councillor Minesh Parek, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. I heard you, Jo. Okay, so we move to a vote.
Lord Mayor in parts? If we may?
You may.
Thank you. In part one, we are against C and D abstaining on E, for F abstaining on G and H, and for I. We're against parts two and three, we're for parts four, five and six, against seven abstaining on eight. That's an abstention overall.
We'll give you that, Jason.
He's got it, yeah.
Okay.
I think.
And, Lord Mayor, can we vote in parts also?
Right.
So in voting for, we are voting against part E and H.
Right, so we are voting now on amendment one. Which one is for?
It's not like it normally, is it?
Yep.
How do we vote?
Okay. Um... Is yours not... Okay, if your screen is not working, somebody will come round if you raise your hand to say that yours isn't working.
Need to be a few more votes. Forget, don't you, every time when you haven't used it, how to do it.
It's awkward.
None we got it.
Well, there was eighty-four, still got some people going.
Yes. So, at the moment, has Sophie managed to vote? Sorry, can I ask? Sophie? Sophie? Have you managed to vote?
Not a hat.
Right, okay. I know this is exciting, can we just make sure that councillor Wilson has a chance to vote? Is it now working for councillor Wilson?
It's about to.
It's about to, okay. Right, has everybody voted? Hang on, we've got one more to go, councillor Downs, I might have guessed. He probably wants to abstain now. I mean, I think it's a clear indication anyway, isn't it? Right, I can tell you that the amendment was carried in its entirety despite the various parts motions and it's forty-seven for and twenty-eight against. So, thank you. So we now move on to amendment two, councillor, which was moved by councillor Sanger. Can we please vote for or against this motion, please? Sorry, or indeed abstain? Which is against, sorry? Have two people not voted or have two people left the chamber? Because we are two down on the last vote. No, but I do want to make sure we have an accurate reflection of the vote. Has councillor Jones left? Well, it is lost, twenty-eight forty-five. Thank you everybody for voting. I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive. All those in favour, please...
Part. Part, yeah. So in voting for, we are voting against E and H from the Labour amendment. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, please can I vote in parts as well? In voting for, I'll be abstaining on paragraph seven of the Labour amendment. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, in voting for, obviously before A and B and all the rest of the text is as we voted in those amendments.
Okay. Right, if everybody would now like to press their blue person and then vote? Okay, it looks as if everybody's voted and it's a resounding seventy-three, seventy-four... Seventy-four nil. Bit like an England rugby league game, isn't it? And now it's seventy-five. Indeed, I don't know either. Okay, that's passed unanimously, thank you. And now we're going to move on to item number seven, notice of motion regarding committing the council to tackling the stigma of menopause and period poverty. And this will be given by councillor Jane Dunn and will be seconded by councillor Julie Growcut. A maximum of, ooh, twenty-five minutes, possibly a little less for this motion. I'm going to call on councillor Jane Dunn to move it and you've got up to three minutes, Jane.
Thank you. My goodness, this took some getting to, like this motion did. Well, today, this council has the opportunity to be trailblazers, to smash the stigma and break the taboos around the menopause and period poverty. We can do what the government are failing to do, act. And far too long, both these issues have been seen as women's problems, to be hushed over, brushed under the carpet, just hormones, so wrong. These aren't just women's issues, they affect every single one of us, irrelevant of race or gender. We need to normalise these conversations and I'll start with the menopause. By the council taking on the GMBs, smash the stigma, we will tackle an inequality that every woman faces in midlife. It will be a strong, clear message that we recognise that this is happening to you and we are here to offer support that the whole of the workforce will understand and be sympathetic to. And we will stop what's happening to one in ten women today, like my friend forced out of her job. Her menopause symptoms crept upon her, insomnia, brain fog, imposter syndrome. For years she coped, in the end she asked for help. Could she job share? Refused. Alter her hours? No. She was told senior managers work full-time. In the end, with nowhere to go, she took early retirement. Her relationship ended, she felt a failure. This was a woman at the peak of her career. The cost of this to our local economy is huge, to our society immeasurable, as is the cost of a period. The Tories said they would end period poverty by 2025. We can't wait for them. We can be the first city in the country to have a period equality charter that will end the shame and the sniggering so no one is left behind or held back by their... end the shame and the sniggering, so no one is left behind or held back by their period. The fact we have period poverty today is immoral, nobody should have to make the choice between this, for five days, or this. It's absolutely disgusting. Our charter will address issues in a positive way, formed with organisations such as IRISE, Power Over Periods, Tula, and No Period Left Behind, thank you ladies. And the force that is Chella Quint, who isn't here. They are leading the way in removing barriers, empowering a generation. And I'll end with this, I asked them, if I could grant you one thing, what would that be? They said, education. This message has to be intersectional, it has to be inclusive, and it must include those who are non-binary and trans, I agree. So I ask you to support my motion, break the taboos of generations, and empower the next, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Dunn. Can I now call upon councillor Julie Growcut to second the motion? You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I'd like to start by thanking the women who've stayed on all afternoon for us to get to this debate, thank you so much for doing that, because it is really important, and I want to just focus really on period poverty, because it's the youngsters, the most vulnerable in our society, who are suffering with that, and I think it's really important that we do do some work to help them. I also want to give a big shout out to Stockbridge District Women's Institute, who for some time have been providing sanitary products to local schools in my ward. It's really good to see that such high-profile women's groups are supporting our young women and girls, and I know that there are many other organisations across the city who are also doing work to support young women and girls by supplying sanitary products. If the government is really serious about ending period poverty, and making sure that we are period poverty free by twenty-twenty-five, then they need to do so much more. Currently, without proper period management, girls could be at higher risk of infection, and recent statistics by Planned International in the UK state that forty-nine per cent of girls miss an entire day at school because of a period. So this is about education, as much as women's health, and about women and young girls achieving their potential. Six per cent of parents said that they were so desperate to supply their daughters with period products, that they resorted to stealing, and one-fifth of parents had said they'd gone without something themselves to pay for the products. These are shocking figures. If this is how we deal with period poverty, you know, I think Jane's example there, do we buy sanitary products or do we buy food, is just not acceptable to anyone. I think it's therefore really imperative that as a council, we play our part, and that we do develop the period equality charter. This could be the start of something really positive for young women in our city, and Lord Mayor, I am really proud and privileged to support this amendment, thank you.
Great, thank you. Can we now move on to one proposed amendment? And I'm going to call on councillor Holmes, no, I'm not, I'm going to call on councillor Marouf-Rove to speak. Maryam? This gets changed every minute, I do apologise, Maryam, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and well done councillor Riddler on your maiden speech. I'll speak briefly on this, just want to say thank you to councillors Dunn and Growcut for bringing this motion, and to my colleague councillor Ralph, who's going to be seconding our amendment. As recognised in the substantive motion, these are matters affecting the whole of society, not just women, so it's important for men to support and understand them as well as women. We agree with the points raised regarding tackling the stigma of menopause, and our amendment doesn't change any of this. We do want to add some points on period poverty though, and want to go further than the substantive motion. We ask the council to examine the feasibility of providing free period products in public toilets and other public buildings, such as community centres and libraries, and we feel it's also important to include reusable products in this, such as moon cups. We should also explore whether any free disposable or reusable products provided by the council can be sustainably sourced. I hope this council will take a step towards tackling the inequality caused by period poverty, and also menopause stigma, to prevent hindering people unnecessarily, and it's worth mentioning that other councils have made commitments to providing free period products recently, such as Brighton and Hove and Oxford. So, thank you, I hope you vote for the amendment, and I'll let my colleague elaborate further.
We get it right this time, councillor Marouf-Rove.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and well done councillor Riddler. It's unfair that many young girls are missing out on their education because of the stigma of periods. As we move further into the perma-crisis, every day, girls in this city will be struggling to cut the cost of their periods. Do we really want girls to be caught by surprise when their period arrives with no period products to hand? Do we really want to leave them with just a rolled-up tissue to use until the end of the school day? Not only is this incredibly uncomfortable, but it makes this city's young girls feel incredibly self-conscious, and leads to many missing out on a valuable education because of a natural change in the body. Giving girls the peace of mind that menstrual products are available wherever they should need them, means they can focus on what they're at school to do, to learn. Periods will be one less thing to worry about. Making menstrual products available for free in all public buildings, as well as schools, will help remove periods as a barrier to the education and future careers of many in this city who suffer from period poverty. It is welcome to note that since September twenty-twenty, all pupils in England should have been learning about periods as part of RSE. It is our duty as members to question if this has or has not been happening in our schools. Do the schools in Saudi, or Stockbridge, or Burn Green, or Dorn, or the many other wards we have in this city, offer the sanitary products they should be doing, or are they ensuring that all pupils are learning about periods? This council needs to make time to listen to every girl in every school in this city. In my experience of working in schools, many girls who are coping with poverty are often not listened to, even about the issues that affect their own lives. The needs of vulnerable groups are also frequently overlooked too, when it comes to period poverty. Homeless women, asylum seekers, and refugees are all particularly at risk, as are girls and women with disabilities and gynecological conditions, whose voices often go unheard. That's why we, all eighty-four members of this chamber, the eight thousand employees of this council, the two hundred thousand households, and the five hundred and fifty thousand individuals in this city, have to listen and push for a vibe shift, and put the voices of all girls at the heart of any change we commit to, yesterday, today, and tomorrow. Thank you.
I've had two indications of people who want to speak, and I'm going to say something too. So, Penny.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you. Thank you, Jane and Julie, for bringing this here. It's almost unheard of, until very recent years, that in a room like this, elected members of both sex and others, will be standing up and talking about periods and the menopause. It never happened. It not only never happened amongst colleagues, it quite often didn't happen amongst families. Some mothers, when I was a young girl, didn't even speak to their daughters about it, and my friends tell stories about finding a pack of sanitary towels on their bed, and asking their friends what they were for. Thankfully, we've moved on an awful long stat, oh, a tremendous way since then, and I hear my grandchildren talking to their boyfriends about their periods, whoa, it would have never happened. This is where we need to be. We've still a huge journey to go on, but by talking, communicating, helping, supporting, we've got a journey which will make lives better for every member of the family. It will make it easier when a work colleague isn't feeling well, for a period, or for the menopause. I mean, I used to work at catering department at the Hounsham Hospital when I was going through the menopause, and I spent half the night stood in the walk-in fridges at certain times, my colleagues knew where to find me. It's not an easy thing to do, but this, bringing it here, and speaking about it openly amongst us all, is where we want to be, very in support of this notice of motion, Chair and the Member. Thank you.
Councillor Shafak Mohammed.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, bringing me in even though the bell's just gone. Thank you councillor Dunn for bringing this motion, I know you wanted to discuss this last month because of the death of her Majesty the Queen, we had to defer it to them. Thank you for the members of the public by sticking with us, it's been a long day. I mean, I think it's really important, the experiences of councillor Baker and others that share that actually, this is a natural thing that happens, and we have to be very clear, we should be able to speak to people about it. You know, we all have members of our family who are female, in my case, a mother, a wife, and a daughter, my daughter's sixteen, and no doubt, you know, it is an issue that we talk about sometimes, when she's not feeling well, she just says, I've got a stomach problem, and we kind of know what that is. And it's really important that we are going to today, not only back councillor Dunn's motion, but we're also going to back the amendment, because I want to see this, the facility and particularly sanitary products offered to people within community buildings. I know, I don't normally bring my work into council debate, but I will do today, Lord Mayor, with your permission, you know, some of you will know, I work in youth services, at the moment I work in Pejo, in the Amalsh Youth Club, and in there, we have a bag similar to the shopping bag that councillor Dunn had, it's brown paper bag, we all know what's in there, whenever one of the young girls says something like, oh, I need to go to the toilet, I stomach, we discreetly go and talk to them and offer those bags, and I think if we can offer those bags elsewhere in community buildings, particularly youth centres but also libraries, why not? Because period poverty is a huge issue, it's just something people don't talk about, and why should we allow that to happen in one of the richest countries in the world? We often talk about the Third World, and India, and Africa, et cetera, but actually, it's an issue right here in our city, and well done, councillor Dunn, for bringing this to our attention, and I'm sure every councillor in this chamber, Lord Mayor, will speak, and the red lights. Singling, I have to sit down.
Barbara.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, really, it's just two comments, because I just don't think that a lot of people realise how the age at which periods start gets lower and lower, and now a lot of children, pupils in junior school, start their periods then, and can you imagine the impact on a nine, ten-year-old of having this suddenly happening to them without any preparation? So I think it's just raising awareness of that fact only, thank you.
I'm just going to add something. I had a meeting with a school council, where one of the, it was a school council of boys and one girl, who absolutely passionately spoke about the need for period products at her school, and she just said it without blanching, in front of all these boys who sort of looked a bit strange, but she carried on, and she's campaigning away from it, she's got a petition going at her school now, I hope that's going to happen in other schools. I volunteer at Ecclesfield Library, and in our toilets, we have bags of all sorts of yes, of period products, but the thing that I wanted to raise, because I'm post-menopausal, is what is referred to on telly now as oops moments, and it's actually older people, older women, and some men with prostate problems, who find that they have incontinence. It may be because they are older, it may be because of cancer treatment they have had, but it is equally, you know, it's equally taboo to talk about it, and to mention that you are somebody who has those moments, and they're not just moments, sometimes, they can be worse than that. So I just want to add an amendment, sort of, that when we talk about period products being available, can we also say we're going to have leak products as well, for those people who also have difficulties in later life? And let's go, oh, thank you, Jane, but let's go, girls, for all those girls who need help with period products. Thank you, everybody. Right. I think we're now going to go to a vote. Let me just find where all the bits are. Oh, sorry, yes, Jane, come back and tell us.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, and thank you, we will be the green amendment. It goes into all the detail of the period equality charter, which is what is going to be put together with councillors, with groups. So a lot of the fine detail that we heard about here, is so that it's formed together, because I think that's what will make it empowering by the whole city, so that is why that detail wasn't there, but thank you for noting that. Regarding RSE in schools, we've actually done a lot of education on that, Chella Quint has done a lot of work on that, but it needs to go further, because nationally, it's a disgrace, and I think that's why the groups that are here today are so excited, that we are actually setting standard, and we are saying, this is what should be happening everywhere. Totally agree about free period products, but we have to find the money for that, and what is great is that all the groups that will be involved can now access the funding, and we, as a local authority collectively, can put that pressure on to government. And Sean Ed is absolutely right, regarding the menopause, regarding everything else, my own brother-in-law had cancer, as he came off his treatment, he had menopausal symptoms. So this is why the education needs to go across the board, and it can't just be gender-stereotyped. But thank you so much, and I'm so proud that we've all said the word period, and I've waved tampons in here as well as those there. But thank you, everybody, and it's really good to see a debate, and occasionally, we do really have them, don't we? Thank you.
Right, amendment, what's it called, amendment three? Yeah, amendment three, I think, Jane, you're accepting that as part of your, can I just say, I think we have a sent? I'm just checking with Jo there, that's great, so that's included, so can we go to the substantive, which includes that amendment? And can I take silence as a sent? We can have a show of hands? That's great, that's unanimous, thank you, Jane, for bringing that. And I'm afraid we are at the guillotine, so the next two motions, we are going to do formally. If Paul will just tell you what page I'm on. Sorry? Oh, good, I'm on the right one. Sorry? Yeah. Okay, so, this is a motion regarding best value services for the people of Sheffield, and it's councillor Mike Leavery, and to be seconded by councillor Joe Otten. So councillor Leavery, can I ask you to propose this formally?
Formally propose, Lord Mayor.
And Joe, can I ask you to second it?
Formally second it, Lord Mayor.
And can I ask councillor Fran Belbin to move amendment four formally?
Lord Mayor, while formally proposing the amendment with the council's permission, I would like to add a single word to it, which is the word generally to two E eight, so that it reads, notes that generally, staff brought in-house to the council at the beginning.
Can I ask councillor Abdi Tan Mohammed? No, she's not here, councillors are here at NAS to second it.
Formally, Lord Mayor.
And now we have amendment five, councillor Douglas Johnson.
Formally, Lord Mayor.
And seconding formally councillor Alexi Diamond.
Formally, Lord Mayor.
We have a vote on amendment four. Can I, it's, yeah. Which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment? If we don't, so we're going to move to a vote.
Lord Mayor, can we vote in parts, please?
Of course.
Of course.
And so in voting for, we are voting against part one, so we're voting against the deletion.
Okay. Fifty-five votes, oh, one abstention. Oh, no, there isn't. No, we've got sixty-eight so far. Okay, we're reckoning there ought to be seventy-four votes in the room. So has everybody voted? Sorry? We've listed who's gone, so we, oh, we, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four. There you are. Okay, and that amendment is carried forty-six to twenty-eight. Thank you. No, we had an abstention twice and then they went away again. Okay, so part one was lost in that amendment, but the rest of it was carried. Right, we'll now move on to amendment, oh, where am I? Five, page thirty-six? Yep. So again, this is the amendment that was moved by councillor Douglas Johnson. Voting in parts? Yeah, who's voting in parts?
Lord Mayor, in voting for this amendment, we're voting against parts three and four of the amendment.
Okay, so you're voting for but against some parts?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Sophie.
I'm voting for the amendment against paragraph four.
Okay. Ten people to vote. I have. Three more votes. Have we got three people who've not vote, two people who've not voted? Two. Seventy-four?
One's logged in and not, somebody's logged in and not voted.
Right, one more vote. Is there anybody who thinks they've voted but they haven't? Because I've got a question mark here. No, there's still one to go. Well, I like to think people do know how to vote. Okay. Indeed, I understand that. Right, I'm going to accept the vote as it is. So that's seventy-three people have voted, forty-five for the amendment and twenty-eight against, but parts one and two are carried and parts three and four are lost. So. Now we move to the substantive? Okay, we move to the substantive. Can I take silence as a cent? No, I can't. Yeah. Do you know, and I thought he was your apprentice. Right. In which case, we're going to go to a vote on the substantive, so.
Can we vote in parts, Lord Mayor?
Of course.
In voting for, we are voting against H two of the original motion and any consequence of the Labour motion that fell. I believe it affected some of the numberings.
Lord Mayor?
Four. Paul, Paul, have you got that down? Right, now I've got councillor Chinchen.
In voting for, I'll be abstaining on the paragraphs in the Labour amendment. Thank you.
Okay, and sorry, Joe, were you?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, in voting for, we're going to vote against the text that Labour has added in their amendment, in amendment four, which is a slight change to what we've advised them services previously. But yeah, we're voting against the text in the amendment before everything else.
And Sophie.
Thank you. In voting for, I'll be voting against HI and HII.
Okay, so there's another ten people to vote, either against or they can abstain, but I'd like to see the abstentions if you're abstaining. Oh, seventy-one, seventy-two. I'm going to sit on seventy-two here by the way. Oh. Oh, I bet it's Tony Downs. Okay, I'm going to finish the vote and it's seventy-three, four. And Paul is working out the permutations of which bits we have lost. Okay, it's all carried, the substantive. Right, so we move on to item nine. Motion of, notice of motion regarding cost of living crisis, national failings and our own local response. So this is going to be, have to be voted formally by Nabilah, but Nabilah, I believe you haven't made your maiden speech, have you? Do you want to ask somebody else to, to just propose it formally for you so you can make a proper maiden speech next time? Okay, no, you're okay. You get to do it formally without losing your maiden speech status. That's fine. Okay. But thank you for your lovely assistant who was willing to help out there. And if we can ask, oh, it was going to be seconded, is it going to be seconded by Zahira? Formally, because Abdi Sam's not here?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, Zahira. And there are two proposed amendments, so amendment six, Joe Otten.
I've formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And the seconder councillor, Simon Clement-Jones.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And then we have amendment seven, councillor Paul Turpin to move.
Formally moved.
And councillor Martin Fitz to second the amendment.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. So now we move to the vote. So we're going to vote on amendment six, moved by councillor Joe Otten. Are there any parts?
Please, Lord Mayor. In voting for, we'll be abstaining on part one of O I, paragraph O I, on part two of that and paragraph, it will be, okay, voting for, we're abstaining on three, three parts. Part one of that motion, in part two, that referring to O I and paragraph P. So voting for part two, O two, three, four and five. That was easier, wasn't it, saying what we were voting for and what we were abstaining for? We're voting for, but we're abstaining a number of things.
We're not voting in parts, I was just wondering if Labour are conscious that they're deleting part of their motion?
No, it's, it's.
Saves time, so. Submitted by amendment. I'm sorry, can I have a, can I have? Is that okay? I went through it several times, I don't know.
Yes, thank you for that. It pointed out to me that we can't actually just vote for two, O, two, three, four and five. So in actual fact, we're abstaining on the whole darn thing. So any Labour group members that are voted for, just change that to an abstention, please.
Abstaining.
Yellow, just brush yellow.
Point of order, please, Lord Mayor. Point of order, please. And we seem to have a vote that has changed because it's been left open for more than five minutes. Is that, is this a proper way to run a vote?
I think I had been leaving it open because not everybody had voted. Now everybody has voted, including the radical abstention. So that is the result now, Joe. So it's twenty-eight, four, forty-five against and one abstention. Right, after the huge excitement of that, we have even greater excitement because it's amendment seven. So this is the amendment that was moved by councillor Turpin. Can I have anybody who's voting in parts? Diane.
And I believe.
On amendment seven, are you voting in parts?
We are voting in parts. We're voting for any remaining parts of the original motion and, I don't know.
Amendment's detailed previously.
We're voting again... in voting for, we're voting against two, three and four, and on point five, we're abstaining on points on paragraph QI, two and three, voting for Q4, five and seven, and voting against Q6.
Okay. Please, can people do a spot of voting? We've got forty-seven, we need to have seventy-four votes.
Similar to the last one, I'm also voting against six, the one on the workplace parking letter.
Right, six more votes, please. No? Five more votes, please, four more votes. How long does it take to vote?
Lord Mayor, I think some members may be still making up their mind, but they have unlimited time, is that right?
Well, I don't know, because maybe they're just pondering your words when you proposed it.
I mean, so my direction to my group is to vote against it, so, you know, I think I've been clear, I can't account for members still pondering the issue.
Right, I'm just going to take that as the final result, anybody who's hoping to vote. So it's forty-six, four and twenty-seven against. So... It's carried in parts, there are seven parts, I'm not going to recite them all, but we'll have them written down. Oh, thank you, Paul. No, we're going to be using, what's that one in cricket, the Duckford, whatever it is? Yeah, I think we'll use that one next time.
If you took with Lewis, it wouldn't have been...
Right, so we're now on the substantive. Okay, we're on the substantive motion. I'm going to move to a vote unless we have unanimous support. Dissent, okay, can we please vote?
Lord Mayor?
Lord Mayor?
Is anybody voting in parts?
Yes, please, Lord Mayor, in voting for, we're voting against the original M, which I think is still there after the reversal of an earlier vote, and we're voting against anything added by the Green amendment, although we're not clear exactly what that is.
Lord Mayor? Lord Mayor?
Sorry, Lewis?
Sorry, can I just check, did the Lib Dem amendment pass or fail? Because I've got...
Shush!
Did it fail in the end? Could I vote against the motion but for J through to L of the original motion?
Okay. Right. Anybody else thinking they might have a bit of a vote here? Yep. I don't know whether somebody has decided they want to be last to vote. Yeah? Okay. This time we have seventy-four votes, and we have seventy-three, four, one against, and there are various parts, I'm sure. Okay. Yep. That's carried in its entirety in that case. Can I just thank you all very much, but most of all, I think I would like to thank Paul because he's the person that's held this bit together. Okay, so we now move to... Item ten, review of polling districts and polling places. I'm going to ask for this item of business is to approve the recommendations in the report as chief exec published with the agenda for this meeting, approving boundary changes to polling districts and proposed polling places, and to delegate authority to the returning officer to make amendments to polling places and stations where a change must be made during an election period. So there is... the motion to approve the recommendations is to be moved by councillor Diane Hurst and seconded by councillor Jo Otten. Councillor Hurst?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
And councillor Otten?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Does anybody want to speak? Oh, you can't anyway, thank you. Can I take silence as affirmation? Great, that's passed non-nemcon. And we'll move now to item eleven, changes to the constitution. Proposed changes are outlined in sections three point one to three point four of the report which we have received from the Director of Legal and Governance, and also in appendices B to G, and relate to the terms of reference for the Health and Wellbeing Board, the procedure for dealing with standards complaints, the councillor's code of conduct and parts of the constitution relating to urgent decision-making and delegation of functions to officers resulting from their currently being... sorry, resulting from their currently being no executive director responsible for children's and adult health and social care. So the motion to approve the recommendations is to be moved by councillor George Linders-Hammond and to be seconded by councillor Angela Argentio. So can I ask councillor George Linders-Hammond?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And seconding councillor Argentio?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Can I take silence as a cent? That's great, thank you. Item twelve, minutes of previous council meeting, minutes of the meeting of the council meeting held on the fourteenth of September, can I ask for that to be formally moved, councillor Hurst?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
And formally seconded by councillor Hussain?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And then item thirteen, membership of council bodies and representatives to serve on other bodies, you should all have had that. Oh, did you not vote on the minutes? Sorry, thank you. Can I take silence as a cent that we have agreed the minutes of the previous meeting? Thank you, that wasn't silent, but hey. And then we're on item thirteen, memberships of council bodies and representatives to serve on other bodies. It's going to be moved by councillor Diane Hurst and seconded by councillor Jo Otten, that approval be given to the changes in the memberships of committees and other council bodies, and the appointment of representatives to serve on external bodies and related issues as detailed in the schedule circulated at the meeting. Councillor Hurst?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Otten?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Can I take silence as a cent? Thank you very much, you've all been immensely patient, and I thank you very much for that. And that concludes the business of today's meeting, thank you for coming home time.